On March 8th, he's got to publish that so that it has eight days for the regular agenda. You should see your priorities reflected somewhere in his report. And he's aware of that. If you don't, if I've missed something or he's missed something, absolutely the process is that the council will change it on the floor. You'll have eight days to review it and make sure that it isn't missing those priorities. And if it is, you know, I think he expects that you'll raise them at that public meeting and/or in your briefings prior to just to figure out the process for getting those included. So I just wanted to let you know where I sit in the process. And then ultimately, the actual council letter or staff report will actually come from the city manager.
And John, one thing I want to, I want to throw in there really quickly. One of the things that I noticed that you asked at all of these round tables is, you know, what does success look like? And I would definitely leave you with that. What does it look like? And I sure hope that as this plan is coming together, that we have pre and post analytics. What does, you know, what does the success look like? And how are we measuring that? And I think that's going to be important.
No, one, one other thing I would add, add to the conversation. So in the original recommendation in December to start this process, it was five points here of what we need to accomplish. So one is develop a comprehensive economic recovery strategy based on research from the economic equity study. That's the first bullet of what we're doing. The second one is to engage with economic development department, civic innovation, economic development commission, economic partnership and LBCI, as well as other partners to conduct a community outreach program. That's your 29 meetings. A third piece, incorporate goals and objectives from a framework for reconciliation report to specifically to promote a racially inclusive and equitable economic recovery. Now, the piece on, where is it? Piece on homeownership came from there. The homeownership piece came from reconciliation report goal, goal one, strategy 8A. So that's, that's where that is referenced here. So it's specifically called out in the council. So whether this was touched on the round table, it's, it's in the direction from council. And then it's, you know, aligned with Fed and state legislative efforts. That's why the federal dollars that are going to drive a portion of this are going to go to Fed-led committee on the 11th to talk about it overall. And then prepare a council report for approval no later than April 1st. That's what's going back on the 16th. So everything's consistent with what we're trying to do here. And then what, what John's part of it is, John's part is just one part of a bigger pie. Because Tom's going to have two more pieces to the pie. If we brought up something that may be outside of John's pie, pie slice, I get it. His job is just to report it back. And it's Tom's problem to figure out what pie slice it fits in. It may not be in this slice of the pie.
No, I get that. And I just wanted John to say how he was going, yeah. And I just want John to say how he's going to advocate for more money for these priorities. Because
And I'm with you.
There's just not enough. I mean, the priority is listed. I mean, this is a $250 million project for us to get what we need done. And we're going to have to do it on a shoestring budget. And we're going to have to leverage those funds. And I totally appreciate the comments about leveraging consumer spending and all of that. And I, I wanted to raise up some more of council vice chair's points related to some of the things that we've brought up in the past that just haven't gotten over the goalposts that really could be unstuck through this opportunity. And I also recognize that the mayor wants to start the council meeting. And he's very energetic about that. So in balancing those two very important priorities.
We still haven't done public comment.
I know, that was my next thought. So with that, let's hand it over to the city clerk for public comment.
Okay, we have three members of the public queued up, ready to speak. Sharon Senegal, you have three minutes to speak. Please unmute your phone.
Good afternoon, City Council and Vice Mayor Rex Richardson. Councilwoman Stacy Mungo, I appreciate your engagement with us on the round tables that we hosted, as well as your teams. I am very concerned that when we talk about equity, we seem to forget about the importance of nonprofit organizations that are doing the work on the ground, such as Ronnie's House, Central Cha, UCC. Councilwoman Richardson, you spoke about the importance of arming and investing in navigators. We opened up the first business accelerator in North Long Beach in 2019. We've supported over 300 businesses, 70% African-American, 80% women-owned businesses. We've been thought partners. We've created spaces for the barber industry, black-owned businesses, the reentry community and black nonprofits in order to achieve equity. But we were completely left out of the CARES Act funding to support our small businesses. The money went to the bids as well as associations. While nonprofits like ours and our numbers don't lie, the beauty industry were the number one grantees in the last small business grants because of the amount of outreach that we did with absolutely no funding from the city of Long Beach. We've got to invest in small organizations, black and brown organizations, because we are not there day to day to lobby you and ensure that when the CARES Act funds come in, they cover us. And so I want to urge city council to ensure that when you talk about a lens of equity, it is thought all the way through the process and that we are investing and utilizing our tools that exist, such as our procurement and our local nonprofits in order to achieve this economic equity. I really appreciate your time and I hope that we're not just speaking equity, but actually delivering on equity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Karen Cervantes, you have three minutes to speak. Please unmute your phone. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon, Chair Mungo and councilmembers. My name is Karen Cervantes and I work for Ronnie's House. I'm the director of outreach and a business coach for the beauty industry. First, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the importance in creating a solid recovery plan. The beauty industry has experienced a bit of hit, as you are all aware. And I'm here today to ask you to consider a package that includes grants, technical support and waivers for renewals of business license. In addition, I want to bring attention to the fact that many of our small businesses here in Long Beach are owned by undocumented individuals who have not been able to receive any financial support and have been locked out of federal grants. Today, I urge you, I urge the city council not to forget these business owners and to follow city staff recommendations because they're also, because they're invested in our, in our businesses. Thank you for listening and your support.
Allison Krip.
Thank you.
You have three minutes to speak. Your time starts now. Please unmute your phone.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, honorable members of the City Council Economic Development and Finance Committee. And a huge big shout out to John Kaiser and his team for all this amazing work. Really thank you for the voice and we really do need more and more voices at this table. On November 17th, 2020, at the Long Beach City Council meeting, the Department of Financial Services presented their business and licensee waiver proposal. This proposal was in support of retail and service sectors. The proposal was amended on the floor by councilperson Richardson and to only include restaurants. It was seconded by councilperson Zendejas, no discussion, and then voted on the floor and voted unanimously in favor. As members of the Long Beach City Beauty Barber and Barber Association and business owners, we are writing today in support of the original proposal presented by the Department of Financial Management. As the proposal states, it's to get, it is, is to provide grants for businesses to offset business license taxes and fees for those businesses closed or materially restricted and impacted for an extended period of time due to the city health orders. The business sectors that were deferred the most were the retail and service sectors. These sectors include restaurants, food and beauty salons, et cetera. And are all the, and the same business sectors experienced the greatest impact of the health order restrictions through mandated closures. The barbering and salon industry, excuse me, has been forced to open and close three times since March 13th. Through that, through that time, this industry has not only lost revenue, but is now required to operate at 25% occupancy. And for many, they have lost clients and stylists due to surrounding cities. As the proposal also states, it appears that many businesses are surviving the pandemic, but others that have having great difficulty, especially if they've been partially or completely closed by the health orders. Restaurants have been able to stay open for takeout service during the whole health orders, while the barbering and salon industry has been allowed to be partially open or closed completely. As the pandemic started, there was also implementation of the new AB5 legislation. This pandemic has forced many to either leave the industry they love or to become an independent contractor for the first time. With the license fees and taxes that it takes to open a small business with little or no income or revenue, it has become even more important to access this grant and proposal as originally written. To, as an opportunity, it's been more important to access this grant and proposal originally written as an opportunity for the barbering and cosmetology industry. We appreciate your time and considerate your support in the original proposal presented by the Department of Financial Management, item 70, on November 17th, 2020, at City Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate everyone who made a comment today. And I just wanted to kind of just close with a couple of quick things. Thank you to everyone who participated in the round tables. Thank you to our staff with economic development and finance. Thanks to my committee members for watching the videos. And also, since we all worked hard to kind of get our comments as short as possible, I do want to additionally mention nonprofits, while they were a component of other things mentioned, they really are a driver of our city. Multiple nonprofits are listed on our city's largest job providers. And it's critical that they have the support they need to stay open. I know that one of my previous comments mentioned a little bit about the personal services and grooming industry. But also, we received a lot of great ideas related to how they could get better support for marketing their own businesses. And for that, let's ensure that we find a way to help them create jobs to market and, and support themselves as they reopen to full capacity over the next several months and to get those customers back. So thank you for everyone who made this a great, great, great exercise. It was amazing to hear from so many people across the city. People I've met before and just really heard more from. It just is so important that we continue to work together as we recover as a city and really lead America in the recovery. So thank you so much. This will conclude the meeting and we will open the full city council meeting. Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have a general public comment as well?
No, no general public comment. We just need to
Oh, we got to vote.
Vote shouldn't vote.
Thank you. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Great. Let's do a roll call vote.
Chair Mungo.
Aye.
Vice Chair Richardson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen.
Aye.
Motion carries and there's no further public comment.
Wonderful. That concludes the meeting of the Economic Development and Finance Committee. Thank you.
Okay, this is Mayor Garcia. We're going to go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. So if I can please have the clerk do a roll call.
If you can just give us 15 seconds to switch over to the council meeting. Okay. Councilwoman Zendejas. Councilwoman Allen.
Here.
Councilwoman Price.
Here, and I think Councilwoman Zendejas also is here.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Councilman Supernah.
Here.
Councilwoman Mungo.
Here.
Councilwoman Sorrow.
Present.
Councilmember Yaranga.
Presente.
Councilman Austin. Vice Mayor Richardson.
I'm here, I'm here. This is Austin.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia.
I am here, thank you. Let's go ahead and begin the meeting with a moment of silence as well as a pledge. And Councilmember Yaranga will lead us.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start with the moment of silence and let's remember that we are still in the middle of pandemic and we are losing too many souls to COVID-19. Thank you. Please join me in standing up if you are able. Put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. We have the consent calendar. So we will start with the consent calendar, which is items one through 13. There is no public comment. If I can please get a motion for the consent calendar, please, on the motion system. Can I get a motion in a second, please? Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Price. Can I get a second? And a second by Councilwoman Sorrow. There's no public comment. Roll call, please.
District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
District six.
Aye.
District seven.
Aye.
District eight.
Aye.
District nine.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now let's move on to the agenda. We have a couple items that have multiple, multiple folks that are here for public comment. So we'll do, we'll do those in a second. Why don't we go ahead and let's, let's do the non-agenda public comment, please. And we'll get through those first and then we'll get to the regular agenda.
Give us one moment while we transfer them into the meeting. Our first speaker for non-agenda public comment is Shirley Long. Shirley Long. Our next speaker is Zoe Berg.
Hi there, can you all hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Zoe Berg. I am the Project Director of Americans for Responsible Technology, or ART for short. ART is a national coalition of over 150 local safe tech action groups across 43 states. I'm here tonight to support the residents of the Long Beach community who are advocating for greater transparency and inclusion in the 5G rollout process, particularly as it pertains to small cell antenna deployments in residential areas. I'm also here to urge the city council to make the following amendments to the city's existing telecommunications code. Pre-notification requirements. Notification to all residents living within 500 feet of the proposed installation site. Notification written by the city of the proposed installation sent via Priority US Mail at the expense of the telecom applicant. Notification should be sent no more than 48 hours after receiving an application to install a wireless facility by a telecom carrier. Given that 35.8% of the Long Beach community is Hispanic, it is absolutely essential that communications regarding proposed installations be available at the very least in both English and Spanish. Regarding the appeal fee associated with appealing a small cell facility or any other wireless infrastructure, charging residents a fee of over $100 to appeal a small cell permit that has already been approved by the city before residents are even aware of such a permit is an unconstitutional violation of free speech and due process. This provision must be omitted and filing an appeal should be free of charge.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosio Torres.
Evening, honorable, honorable mayor and city, city council members. My name is Rosio Torres. I'm a resident at the 2nd district and a board member of AOC 7 Neighborhood Group. First and foremost, I would like to thank Councilwoman Suzy Sorrow and the 6th district team for seeing us as a viable community partner, including AOC 7 Neighborhood Group and the COVID-19 clinic and outreach initiatives to make a bigger impact in our community. I would like to take Long Beach, I also would like to thank the Long Beach Health Department and the Office of Equity for being inclusive and ensuring that the community leaders are being part of the vaccination sub-communities. Thank you, Mayor Garcia, for continuing to improve the process of enrolling our most disadvantaged communities. Now, here are a few more suggestions to improve the enrollment process for vaccination. AOC 7 is canvassing the neighborhood using grassroots strategies, walking our neighborhood, passing our flyers. Just like the census outreach, we are strategic and need the materials to be streamlined. Have a central location with educational materials ready for community leaders to pick up. Allow community organizations to have a network or forum to share their outreach successes. For instance, one success we've had so far, we hosted a monthly social distance neighborhood cleanup, like the one that we had on September 20th. This cleanup had two purposes, cleaning our neighborhood and also COVID community outreach. Over 200 packets provided by the Long Beach Center for Economic Inclusion. AOC 7 volunteers walked throughout our neighborhood, giving out surgical masks, food pantry flyers and try
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shirley Long.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Okay, hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Earl Avenue Neighborhood Community under the 6th district. My purpose today is to give a voice to our opposition of the 5G cell tower recently erected literally at our front door. Before I begin, I ask that the elected city council members, please, hear me out and just listen to my personal story. My name is Shirley Long. My husband Danny and I are longtime residents of Long Beach. We have lived at 131 East Eagle Street for more than 20 years. We are proud homeowners and we have grown to know and love our neighbors. We are equally proud of the ethnic diversity of our neighborhood. I've shared my concerns regarding 5G installations with residential, within residential neighborhoods with the city's public works department during our appeal process at the end of 2020. I must say that I felt betrayed by the city. There was a lack of transparency as to who Verizon was bringing to the appeal meeting and thus, we were not able to prepare accordingly with experts to counter or address their claims. We lost our appeal and I feel that our concerns fell on deaf, deaf ears. Those concerns expressed included potential health risks and destructive economic implications.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Mayor Garcia, would you like to proceed to item 14?
Do we need to vote?
Not on public comment.
Okay. Madam Clerk, madam.
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, we're having, maybe there's an issue, but on my list, I have a lot more folks who are on public comment signed up. Is that not the case or?
They did not call in.
Okay, that's the issue then, because I have, I had way more on here though. Okay, so we, you've got to public comment. And let's, let me delete these other folks here really quick. All right, and let's go ahead and move on. Then, public comment is, is complete. We're going to go to the items that have the most folks right now signed up. So item, we do item 22 first.
Item 22, communication from Councilwoman Zendejas, Councilwoman Allen, Councilwoman Mungo, Councilmember Yaranga. Recommendation to request city manager to study feasibility and explore support or financing options for the creation of a Latino cultural district and a mixed-use small business economic development.
Okay, Councilwoman Zendejas.
Thank you, Mayor. At this moment, I would like to ask if we could please hear public comment on this item? If there is some.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, our first speaker is Alan Armijo.
Hi, can you hear?
Yes, please begin.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Alan Armijo, local business owner of Armijo Enterprises, Inc. I'm calling in to express support of item number 21-0182, El Mercado de Long Beach. The ongoing pandemic and protests for social justice have focused the spotlight on our communities of color, not because the events exposed disparities and inequalities in these communities, but because they proved the disparities and inequalities exist and are ongoing, if not systemic. Please read Jessica Quintana's concept paper for El Mercado de Long Beach. This project checks a lot of boxes for helping our Latino community achieve what a lot of people take for granted because of better access to opportunity. Keep in mind that Jessica did not write this concept paper overnight. It is a 20-year work of devotion to helping the Long Beach Latino community prosper and thrive and whose time has come. I encourage the city council to study, fund, implement and develop the Mercado de Long Beach. There's enough intelligence, talent and work ethic to the Long Beach Latino community to make this a success, but it requires financial and governmental support to get it off the ground. To sum up my support in an equation, economic opportunity plus business and property ownership equals economic and social justice. It only gets better from there for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Chavez.
Yes, hi, am I heard?
Yes. Chris, please begin your comment.
Yes. Thank you, yes. My name is Chris Chavez. I am actually resident of the 6th district. But I want to state my support for item 21-0182, which is start the process of creating El Mercado de Long Beach. This project will better serve Long Beach's Latino, Latina, Latinx community, which comprises over 42% of the city's population. Working with a trusted community partner like Central Cha is vital in ensuring the mercado is culturally appropriate, inclusive, and helps address the community's needs. It is also important to note that the mercado could provide a convenient, accessible location for community organizations and services. Creating a place like the Mercado de Long Beach is important for historically under-invested neighborhoods. Sesan Chavez Park is in the census tract that ranks in the 90 to 95th percentile of Calumbaro screens disadvantaged communities. Lastly, while Measure S is a potential source for funding of the project, I urge you to take care, to carefully consider how any project addresses the community's environmental, health and/or youth and economic employment needs given the limiting funding. I do think that this is a good potential source for it, but certainly want to see that funding used in the most effective way possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Salazar. David Salazar.
Mayor Garcia, members of the city council and city staff. My name is David Salazar. I'm a resident of District 5. I speak tonight as a longtime board member of Central Cha and the founder and executive director of the Long Beach Community Design Center. The creation of El Mercado Mixed Use Project in a Latino cultural district is an idea whose time has come. The project has been talked about in the Long Beach Mexican-American and Latino community since the 1980s. What you have before you tonight is the 2021 slash 2.0 version of that dream. The project has equity at its core. It will provide affordable housing, workforce development, health services, retail commercial, all within a district that will showcase the city's vibrant and historic Mexican-American and Latino community. Presently, there is not an established commercial area that represents a city burgeoning Latino population. El Mercado and Cultural District will provide identity and recognition for this population and can be integrated into the city's downtown core and waterfront. The creation of place is critical at this moment in establishing its center, a hub for the Long Beach Latino community to call home. But it will also serve as a regional economic generator, offering residents, visitors and tourists an authentic cultural experience. In summary, the combination development of the Mercado Mixed Use Project and the designation of Latino Cultural District will provide the following. Creation of a community, of community wealth and self-determination, affordable workforce housing, entrepreneurial and small business opportunities and economic development, Mexican-American and Latino heritage recognition and identification and equity. And just as important, the creation of place that promotes art, culture and and just as important, the creation of place that promotes art, culture, and social space. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Quintana. Jessica Quintana? Our next speaker is Lourdes Ramos.
Hello? Hello?
Hi, please begin.
Uh, okay. Hello, my name is Lourdes Ramos. I'm the president and CEO at Mola, the Museos Latino American Art here in Long Beach. Uh, it's an honor to support the proposal to develop a feasibility study to understand the need for a Latino district in Long Beach. We would also like to express our interest to be an active part of this process as is aligned with our mission and enforced towards inclusion, diversity, and equity among all under-presented communities in Long Beach. It is cause for celebration that at the time when the Mola began the twenty-fifth anniversary and after two years of planning for the future expansion of the museum, the possibility arises of contributing the development of the great Latino district or cultural corridor that will provide more opportunity for the benefit of all a greater Long Beach. We hope that we can building up this dream together, and thank you for your attention. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Anaya.
Hello, my name is Megan Anaya, and I am speaking on behalf of Centro Cha today. Uh, I am here in support of the El Mercado de Long Beach, a mixed-use Latino economic development cultural district. Now, it's important to remember that we need to support our Latino community here. Our community, our Latino community in Long Beach is a powerful and resilient force in the local economy. They represent over forty, uh, nearly forty-three percent of the city's population with one hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-two citizens residing within the city. Now, these, um, this population also represents forty, uh, two-point-six percent of the residential labor force, so the workforce in Long Beach. And of the Latinos working in Long Beach, that's a seventy percent labor force participation rate, which is amazing in the economy. But we have to remember that in order for this group to continue to thrive and contribute to the local economy, we must proportionately support them by dedicating resources and allocating them towards projects like El Mercado to make sure that there's continued success within this community. So to give you an understanding of what this community means to Long Beach, in, uh, our twenty-nineteen report, we discovered that of the ninety billion dollars generated in the local Long Beach economy, thirty-four-point-three billion is directly contributed from Long Beach working Latino residents. And of that, thirteen-point-seven billion was contributed by our Long Beach immigrant population in, um, our Long Beach Latino, uh, resident immigrant population. So overall, the Latino population in Long Beach supports thirty-eight-point-one percent of Long Beach's total contribution to the greater region. And we need to make sure that we have a space dedicated and carved out to this resilient group because there are no existing spaces within the city to dedicate to our Latino youth, families, seniors, small businesses, or individuals to make sure that they can have the strength and prosperity to continue to grow within our community. Uh, additionally, we find that sixteen percent of our Latino families are living in poverty, and that's representative of over six thousand two hundred and seventy-three families within the city. Further, there are, uh, additional economic disparities faced by our community that we hope that this El Mercado and this economic district can help us, uh, support. Um, and when it comes to digital access gaps, we see that our Latino residents have less digital access than our other residents within, um, Long, uh, within Long Beach. We see that there is a health disparity among our Latino population, and this has only been exacerbated by the past year and the effects of the COVID-nineteen virus. Uh, and not to mention, um-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Quintana.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Garcia, members of the city council, city manager, um, Tom Morica. Um, my name is Jessica Quintana, and I'm the executive director of Centro Cha, and we are so excited for this item to be presented before you today. Um, I know you heard speakers before, um, talk about all the needs of the, um, Mercado project, but we just want to also provide how important this establishment of a Latino cultural district will serve to connect the development of the El Mercado's mixed-use development and become a designation that offers a vibrant collection of retail, commercial, housing, art, cultural venues, and businesses that reflect the history and cultural values of the Long Beach Mexican-American Latino community. Presently, there is not an establishment commercial area that represents the city's Latino community, which stands at forty-two percent and growing of the population. A cultural district will provide identity and recognition for this population and can be integrated into the city's downtown core and waterfront. The creation of this place will not only be a showcase for the vitality and spirit of the Long Beach Latino community, but will also become a regional economic generator, offering visitors and tourists an authentic cultural Latino experience. I just want to take this time to thank, um, our two, um, champions. I'd like to thank councilmember, uh, Mary Zindejas and councilmember Stacy Mungo for being bold and taking this project forward. Um, as you heard in previous comments, this, this is not new. This, this hasn't been discussed overnight. This initiative has been well over twenty-five years in our community. And so I just also like to thank Cindy Allen and councilmember, um, Roberto Uranga for signing on to this initiative because it really takes innovation, uh, to be able to bring forward a project like this. Um, and we are pleased, um, to be working in partnership with our city, with our economic development, um, with the, the director, John Kaiser, and Sergio Ramirez. Um, projects like this only come about through, through community and, and, and public partnership. And so we'd just like to thank them for their innovation and understanding, um, our community demographics and the need of how we are going to really look at how this pandemic has really impacted our community and looking at a long-term economic recovery, uh, for our community. So I just want to thank you so much again. Um, thank everybody for their leadership. Uh, this means so much to our community, and we look forward to, uh, moving this, this project forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Back, back to Councilwomen Zindejas.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'd like to thank all of the, um, people who spoke yet for in support of this item. El Mercado de Long Beach is an exciting, um, vision that has been happening, um, for years in the city of Long Beach. Um, we have one of the biggest, um, the biggest Latino communities here in the city of Long Beach. So it is, um, with no doubt why this would come up over and over throughout the years. I think that the timing is, is perfect right now. I think it's, it's long overdue, and it's time that we move, uh, with something for such a, a great project. It's gonna be a, a mixed-use project that would include and not be limited to-
I'm going to tell them we're on item number twenty-two, that they skip through others.
I'm sorry.
Someone, someone's on the, uh, on the line, please, please mute. Councilwoman, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, like I was saying, that this project will not only be limited to restaurants, grocery stores, retail, commercial, housing, entertainment, um, but also so many other social services that will be available. Um, one of the most exciting things that is happening is that right now we're also working on the development of our Latino Cultural Center, um, in the Cesar Chavez Park, which is, um, an amazing thing to be part of right now. So I'm really excited that we're going to be bringing this, um, together, um, side by side. I feel that this is, um, perfect timing for it. I really want to thank, um, councilmember Mungo for her contribution to this, and councilmembers Allen and, and Uranga, thank you so much for, for joining in on the vision of this project and for, um, councilmember Uranga for your vision as well, uh, on this project. I know that so many community members, um, especially Centro Cha, have been working on this for a very long time. And so I just, you know, I'm, I'm grateful that the time has come, and I'm grateful that we are able to move forward on this item. I also wanted to, um, to have a little bit of clarity on, on the, um, on the funding that I know that, you know, part of the funding, we, we were hoping that we could look at, um, at Measure Us. And I know that Measure Us is mostly, you know, for, for youth and stuff like that, um, and, and health and climate, but there are other, other appropriate funds that we could look into. So I don't want to limit ourselves. So as we, you know, do this feasibility studies, let's not limit ourselves to the funding, and let's explore all possibilities because this is gonna take, uh, really a city effort to, uh, create something like this. It's gonna be huge. I can already see it. It's gonna be attracting so many people, not only locally here from Long Beach, but it's gonna be attracting people regionally. And I can, um, I can see how much it's gonna, uh, drive our economic, um, our economics here in Long Beach. I mean, just, just imagining it just gives me so much excitement. So I'm really looking forward to it, and I, um, want to invite to hear from my council colleagues as well on this item, and I'll come back to it as well.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Zindejas, uh, Councilwoman Mungo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Zindejas. Um, I'm so proud of so many Fifth District residents who have really championed this for many, many, many years. I want to recognize, um, Susanna Edman and David Mercado and, um, Carmen Perez, and I, I also believe, uh, Cynthia Cordero. Just so many of our Latino, Latina leaders have really championed this, and it is their work that has come to fruition. Um, I am just a supporter here in ensuring that, um, their voices are heard and that we here can work towards ensuring that cultural districts across the city, um, for not just Hispanic community, um, have been invested in. But at this time, we need to focus that, and the resources where, um, they are most needed. And, and the time has come, as Councilwoman Zindejas said, for this community to have an area that really supports the growth and, and flourishing and respect, and, um, um, I can't think of the word that I had in mind, but ensure that that goes on for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Mayor Richardson.
Hey, I queued up to lend my voice in support of this, um, uh, this item. I think it's a great way to demonstrate, uh, creative ways to boost our local economy. We have to play to our strengths. Cultural districts create a safe place for, um, culture and music and art and food and commerce and exchange and overall community. And the more we can play to our strengths in areas, particularly in areas that have had, um, you know, longstanding economic issues or, or over time, you know, they haven't grown in the, in the same ways that other areas have. This is a great way to invest in those communities. So I'll certainly support this. We had a good, healthy conversation in the Economic Development Committee today about this and economic zones and cultural zones across the city. And so I'm, I'm certainly happy to support this. I want to congratulate and thank, uh, councilmembers Zindejas, uh, and your contributions, councilmember Mungo, and all the signers, uh, because I think this is a great item, and I look forward to, uh, walking through El Mercado someday and, uh, with my girls and, and, and talking about the process to get there. So I'll certainly look forward to supporting this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Uranga.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank all the councilmembers who have spoken in favor of this item. It's wonderful. We had a discussion about this about a week and a half ago or so, and, uh, and that was part of that discussion as well. As people have seen, this is not new. It's, it's, it's a project that has been many years in the making. And it's one of those situations where the timing was perhaps not right, uh, thirty years ago or so. It was in nineteen, early, mid nineteen eighties, uh, where an idea like this, a concept of this would nature was first brought forward, but, uh, the stars were not aligned. And I think that now we have the stars aligned, we have the right people in the right places doing the good things. And I think that, uh, once we are concluded with the study, we can move forward with an actual project that will bring people to, to Long Beach and to learn more about the Latino culture and, and all its, uh, grandeur and, and amazement. Uh, we have also a, a museum of Latin American art. I'd like to see how we can connect art into this project as well. I think it would be very important as, as art and food and culture is very important to the Latino community, and it would be a wonderful addition to, uh, have that inclusion as well. So I'm very supportive of this. It's a long time coming. I'm so happy to be here and be able to vote on this, uh, which is something that I didn't have an opportunity to do back, uh, nearly thirty years ago, which is, uh, uh, that could be full circle for me. So thank you for bringing this forward, uh, Mary and, uh, and Stacy and, and all the co-signers on this. It's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to move the, uh, the community forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also want to thank councilmembers Zindejas and Mungo and Uranga for bringing this forward. I'm just happy to, uh, support it. And I absolutely agree with so many of the comments, um, that were made. It's, the time has come to, uh, invest in this dream that so many people have, um, advocated, um, for years. So this has got to be a great day for all of you. Um, you should be proud. Your hard work and your advocacy, um, paid off, and I just strongly support small businesses and business hubs and disproportionately impacted areas. And having been a small business owner myself, I know that there's a lot of value, um, in these community business hubs. And seeing more minority-owned businesses encourages local entrepreneurship and provides jobs and also helps small businesses grow. And I also believe that this is going to be an amazing economic, uh, generator for the city. Um, I also would, um, like to see other institutions, including Mola in the Second District, um, included, um, in the feasibility, uh, process. So again, congratulations, you all. Happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to also express my support for this item and how excited I am to see this come, uh, in this form of a, not only cultural center, but an economic development, um, component to, um, really lifting out to address various equity issues in the Latino community. And I think it's just a great way to create inclusion in our city to celebrate and really reflect the diversity and the population that has lived here and has contributed greatly to this amazing city that we live in. Um, so I, I just want to also make sure to thank, um, uh, councilmembers Zindejas for leading the item with councilmember Roberto Uranga and, uh, councilmember Mungo and, um, Allen, um, and as well as, uh, Centro Cha for leading the efforts. And I also just want to make sure, um, we have a process that will also include many of the other various, um, Latino businesses and nonprofit groups that, um, I think we'll be able to just work together, um, in addition to Mola as well. So thank you very much, um, and thank you to staff for working on this item as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, um, chime in and, and say that I support this too. And, uh, Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Uranga recently said something, uh, he was obviously not the first to say it, but it really rings true on this. He said, "Build it and they will come." And I thought, you know, and when we're- And I thought, you know, and when we're talking about integrating our diverse communities in the city of Long Beach, how wonderful it is to have spaces that have their own uh character, their own offerings, um their own vibe and that celebrate the the rich diversity and culture of all parts of our city and and have that uh as as something that every resident in the city can enjoy. And I love the the small business aspect of it and supporting our small business owners uh in a in a corridor like this. So thank you very much, uh Councilwoman Zendejas and the co-signers for bringing this forward. Uh I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Uranga, did you queue up again? I'm sorry about that.
Uh no, but I do want to have a final comment in the sense that uh perhaps uh staff can look at the archives. When we brought the LUSC Center back in around nineteen eighty seven, eighty eight, around there, when we did the study uh with them, Manny Perez, a a well-known architect in the area at the time, uh led 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 that group. And we came up with a plan. Uh but uh again, it wasn't the right time. There were not people in the council uh that were supportive of it. And so it was sort of put on a shelf. And I was wondering if uh we could have staff look at the archives and dust it off and and see what was presented back then as a part of uh just of the getting a historical perspective. You know, the more things change, the more they stay the same. And so I'm pretty sure that there's some material in there that would be of uh of uh help in in getting this project off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Austin.
Thank you. And uh unfortunately, uh Councilmember Uranga, you didn't have the last word. I guess we queued up uh um queued up after you. But uh I did want to express my my support for this this item. Um obviously, um thank you, uh Councilmembers Zendejas and the co uh agendizers of this item. Uh anytime we can celebrate culture, marry that with um economic development, uh we're winning as a city. And so um this is a a a a motto, I think, that we should should look at. I did, uh I know there's a we we're all supportive of this and we'll vote in support of this. But I did have a question for staff related to to process um in terms of how the feasibility study would be conducted and with stakeholder groups. And would the this uh be engaging our Economic Development Commission?
Yeah, Councilmember, um this is John Kaisler. I'm here with Sergio Ramirez. And um this is this is a great project for um economic development. Um so typically, what what we would do is we would start with a market analysis and and taking a look at potential stakeholders as well as um uh community needs and and perform some community outreach. And then we would uh engage with some um financial uh analysis to to see what um the different recommended areas uh might require. Uh of course, we want to look at land use and zoning. So we'd work with our partners over in 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 Development Services to take a look at the different uses that are currently allowed for those areas that are recommended. And and then we would come back to the City Council uh with uh some recommendations. So uh it would take um, you know, a a a couple of months to to do this the right way and and engage with the community and and different stakeholders. But uh this is something that, you know, per the council direction, we we would get together with the city manager and and put together a process with some of those uh timelines and 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 resources that are needed as soon as possible.
Well, thank you for that clarification. And and I think I heard one or two public commenters uh mention um ideal locations. Um have we, are we there yet? Or is that part of the feasibility study? And if so, I'll just tell you, I know of a couple of excellent uh business corridors in the Eighth District that would be um awesome candidates. I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Superna.
Uh thank you. I just wanted to uh thank uh all those who brought this forward. And I really do appreciate the longevity of the project here. There was a state infrastructure project in my uh twenty years on. And so I really appreciate that this is thirty years old and and no one lost sight of the of the project. So congratulations and thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Councilwomen Zendejas.
Thank you, everyone, um for your comments and your support on this. Again, it reconfirms um how the timing is is perfect right now um for for bringing a a study forward um on this amazing project. Um I also wanted to uh give a big shout out to um some of the supporters that have been supporting this for a while, like Senator Linda Gonzalez, who continues to be a champion and continues to be um supporting of 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 the First District. And having something like this in the First District would be super amazing. Um also want to uh thank our school board member Juan Benevides for for his support on this item as well. Um him being part of, you know, this district is very important to have his support. I also want to thank our trustee uh from Long Beach City College, her Linda Chico, who continues to um support this item as well. These are all um elected officials who um continue to support the Latino community in any way possible. And I think it's super important that um that we, as a community, unite and become very inclusive of all the organizations that represent Latino, the Latino community in order to make this a very successful um project going forward. So I look forward to the visibility study. And I can't wait to see what staff um will come up with because I have full confidence that they are going to bring back something amazing um working with all of the stakeholders. So again, thank you, Centro Cha, for for leading on this as well. And I look forward to uh working with you hand in hand on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to um just add, of course, my uh thanks to everyone. Uh most importantly, all the community members that have been advocating and and really working and fighting for this project for for so many years, uh particularly uh Centro Cha and all of the community organizations um that have been involved in this process. And especially, thank you, Councilwomen Zendejas. I want to thank Councilwoman Mungo, who is very involved in the development of this, and the other uh folks that are on the item as well. Uh Councilwoman Uranga, uh Councilwoman uh Allen. Uh thank you, everyone, to supporting this this uh this project. I think it's going to be fantastic. And thank you all for working on it so much. And with that, we've done public comment. Let's go ahead and go to a vote.
District one. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
District six.
Aye.
District seven.
Aye.
District eight.
Aye.
District nine.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. But let's go ahead now and move on to item seventeen.
Communication from Councilwoman Price, Councilmember Uranga, Councilwoman Sorrow, Councilman Austin. Recommendation to direct city manager to identify the additional resources needed to implement changes from the city auditor's library services performance audit of 2020.
Councilwoman Price.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. This um item was co-authored by myself and Councilman Uranga. And it's really premised upon the auditor's findings in regards to our library services and areas where uh we can improve access and usability by our citizens and and those visiting the city who want to use the library. It's especially important right now, I believe, for us to take a look at um our library services and make sure that we are uh serving the public in the best way that we can, given the increased reliance on uh technology being provided through our libraries for access um for people, for employment, for schooling, uh and access to materials um that are maintained by the library um for everyone who is looking to um do a lot of the virtual work and virtual learning that they're doing these days. I think it's really um important for us to notice that we have uh an incredible library system in the city of Long Beach, but it is underfunded. Uh we have not placed enough resources into the library to account for the changes in um user trends involving the library and the changes in technology, um and the need for us to be able to be uh flexible and adapting uh to what it is that the users of the library need. Um one of the areas that's been very important to me in terms of library services is identifying hours uh for the library that are um useful and meaningful to residents. Um I really laid out um a great summary of our current system and how it is um not meeting to the best of its ability the needs of all residents throughout the city. And so this item really asked the city manager to look at our current library services, to see what services can be reallocated or modified within our existing budget to improve access to the library uh by all of our diverse communities. And also uh to look forward to um the years to come in terms of what kinds of resources will be needed for our library to be able to meet industry standards, um best practices uh in the area of library services. Um so let me turn it over without saying too much more to Councilman Uranga, who can speak to this item as well. Um and I I do want to thank in advance our library services director um who met with us. And um I mean, her her feedback and her work with the libraries um has been phenomenal. So Ms. Williams, we thank you uh for being open to some of these changes and being willing to work with us on how we get there. So I'm turn it over to Councilman Uranga.
Uh is that okay, Mayor?
Hundred percent. And you're queued up next, of course.
Well, I just want to be recognized. I didn't want to just jump in there. I was just follow the protocol. Uh thank you, uh Councilmembers uh Price for uh introducing the topic. And thank you for your work on this. And we we did do a little bit of uh word smoothing and co-authoring and trying to get the the uh the item as uh as strong as we possibly could. Uh I want to also thank uh Councilmember Sorrow and Austin for joining us on this item. It's important to have the support and also acknowledge that they also acknowledge that there has been some issues with this. Of course, uh this wouldn't be here without the uh great work of our city auditor, Laura Dowd, and the hard work of her staff and and looking into the library services and and how we could make it better. Uh it's not that we wanted to find any the any issues or any areas of of concern, but they do come up and they did rise up. And and some of them were quite uh quite outstanding to us in regards to uh access, uh especially when we're not talking about not only hours, but in terms of access to non-English uh speaking materials as well as uh programs and and the the lack of uh adaptive technologies for persons with disabilities. And the finding system that uh we find has been very harmful, especially to uh the uh communities of color. Uh I would think that hopefully with the uh additional review that we're going to be doing, that we can look at those areas that are going to be most impacted and especially to disenfranchised and uh communities of color. And one of the ones that stands out the most is obviously the the finding system. By that, it's disproportionately harmful uh in communities of color. And what we might want to look at is basically just be, just eliminate fines. Uh let's get the books back. I mean, basically, when we're looking at areas of 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 need, uh we need our materials. And and when there is a finding system that punishes people uh and and makes people not want to return the books because of the uh fines and the way they accumulate and 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 just become basically uh untenable, that uh basically we could look at a way of just having a fine forgiveness. Uh just return the materials and we'll forgive you. Uh or we rephrase that, and you'll be forgiven, not that we. Uh so that we can uh uh get the the materials back and and be uh available for reuse and 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 other people can take advantage of this as well. So I'd be, I would be very strong in supporting a uh a system such as that. Um but then again, we need to look at what's going on and and how we can best implement such a program like that. I know that it would have some uh financial impacts for the library. Uh but then again, uh it's about materials, access, and as well as being able to be a uh ser- a service to our community or that they can only be a safe haven for them to study, but also to to learn. So I'm looking at well as the possibility of getting more bilingual staff and obviously more bilingual material and uh being able to provide greater opportunities of technology as well, so that we can expand and grow our library system as much as possible. So with that, uh I'll uh I'll leave it to my other colleagues that they want to comment as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Zendejas? Actually, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh who's next? Councilwoman Uranga went next up. Yep, Councilwoman Zendejas. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I really want to thank my colleagues for bringing this item and uh our city auditor and staff for this. Um I especially for their focus on addressing equity and access to our amazing libraries. Uh before I was a councilwoman, part of my background is that I volunteered in our former main library in what was what has become the Center for Adaptive Technology, our CAT Center, working with the disability community on things like closing the digital divide and building access to city resources for people who may um not be able to do so anywhere else. Um I so I know firsthand how critical these services are. And it pains me greatly that um that we don't have a library in our First District and that we still have such a long way to go to creating access for our community um that deserves this in in my district. Um as we work to expand the services available in our libraries, um I think that we need to remember and address that there are many residents of our city that don't have access to libraries near them or near where they live. And in many cases, there are the exact communities that are that would benefit greatly from having access to tools like computer labs um with all the other services and resources that our libraries can provide. As we continue to address everything through a lens of equity, I think that part of that should be considered, how we can work on expanding our libraries to those who currently have the least access to um libraries due to geographic or technology or language barriers. Uh I know that funding is limited, and that is the piece of the of the conversation and one that has been a barrier in these plans in the past. But it it is my hope that we can prioritize efforts as we begin to see the effects of federal relief spending. And we can continue to put the services first as we build our city back and stronger together. So um I'm really thankful for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank um our co-authors, uh Councilwoman Price and Councilmember Uranga for bringing the item forward. Um this, you know, libraries um have a very special place in my heart and childhood because it's one of the safe places I went to in order to get services and to be able to just have a place to go to while I was waiting for my parents to pick me up. And so I know that that's also true for many of the residents, the libraries that are in my district. I think the two most widely used is Mark Twain and Burnett, given the density of around the area. And and so I'm very supportive of identifying additional resources that can allow us to address some of these critical issues listed. And we're seeing that, obviously, libraries during this pandemic is beyond just a place to check out books, but it has been a place that people have been using to connect to the internet, to print out um materials. And furthermore, just places for homework assistance. And I think it has the potential to do so much more to address many of the needs of the surrounding community, um particularly even just for business owners as well, should they need um, you know, workshops that are needed to help them recover, to even to help them recover, to even, you know, potentially down the line, just a variety of workshops that help meet the needs. So that's why I'm very supportive of this item and look forward to seeing a report back in 90 days about ways that we can address it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also want to thank Councilmember Price for bringing forth this very thoughtful item. Also want to lift up and thank our city auditor in her office for doing the audit and making the recommendations. It just shows that our city auditor's office is hard at work and always looking to improve governance and efficiencies in our city. I wanted to ask, because I think most of the recommendations here are laudable. These are items, obviously, I signed on to in support of this item, so I support. But I wanted the city manager to just explain to the council, if you can, what steps have already, are we already doing through the budget recommendations for FY21?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember. As part of the FY21 adopted budget, there was a direction to really study additional hours. The council was very interested in looking at what else we can do with our hours and our library system. There was a proposal in the FY21 budget to do something along those lines, but it was, it just wasn't quite ready at the time for the council, I believe. So we are bringing that back. We'll have some additional information probably in the next couple of weeks. And then we've also been working really closely with the auditor on these, looking at doing as many as we can within our existing resources. And then we'll report back on what other resources we might need to take the next step through the FY22 budget process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I thought I remembered us discussing library hours and looking at that. But if that didn't make it in the process, that's great. I'm glad we're looking at it now.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. It did. So that was part of the FY21 direction, was not to move forward with the staff proposal at the time, but to then look at other models and come back with you with information. So that's what we are reporting back in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers Price and Uranga and our auditor on this. I took a minute, and it's very interesting bringing this to my attention. I hadn't taken time to read it, but I read the entire audit. And I'll tell you, something, certain things, you know, stand out. I certainly appreciate, one, the fact that we're raising up, and we need to do this better and more often, but we're raising up the needs of individuals with disabilities. And that's referenced in this item, and it's referenced here, the status and the efforts within our library services department to do so. I also want to sort of elevate, you know, and Councilmember Sorrow mentioned this, but the role of libraries continues to evolve, and we know that. I mean, people use it, the libraries as a computer lab, a workforce center, all of those things. And the Obama Library in my district has certainly been an example. We've done everything from community gatherings to, you know, everything. It's been the heart of the community since we've opened it. And so as we reevaluate some of these recommendations, I think we should, you know, take off the shelf the conversation. There was a proposal, and it was readjusting some of our hours, but what it did was placed social workers in four of the libraries in order to take, you know, an affirmative step toward providing more comprehensive services out of libraries. Now, with the exception of what Mary mentioned, Councilmember Zendehaus mentioned, the first district, the libraries are generally in every part of our town, even in areas where we don't have other things. Like, you know, I learned recently that the West Side has no computer lab. North Long Beach has no workforce center. It's changing, but we all have libraries. So I would love to see, as a part of this, how we can make sure that we bring some of those elements, the social worker piece, which didn't make into the audit, but it has come up at city council. I think it was a year ago, it came up at city council as an effort to identify four social workers. Now, it could be social work, it could be workforce, not quite sure. But I want to see some affirmative steps to providing services that are lacking in the community, because I think there's going to be much more needed, significantly more need for that in the recovery. So again, I think this is a great item, and I'm happy to support it, and I look forward to the report that comes back. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, let's go ahead and go to public comment. As we go to public comment, I know that our city auditor, Laura Dowd, wanted to say a few words. So let me turn it to her, and then the clerk, if you can do public comment, please.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to thank all the council members, all for your very kind comments and supportive comments, and for Councilwoman Price and Councilman Uranga and Councilmember Austin and Councilwoman Sorrow for this item as well. I just wanted to add how fortunate we are here in Long Beach to have 12 beautiful libraries that provide such valuable services to our community. One of the things I'm really pleased with on this particular audit was that our auditors conducted seven focus groups with community members and interviewed several stakeholder group representatives to understand the community needs and the community wants. So this, we started this audit before COVID, at a time when we were able to meet face-to-face with several of the focus groups and listen to them and to their needs. And I want to thank also the, our department head, Glenda Williams, for her support during this audit and the great input that she gave to us. And I'm very pleased with these recommendations. And I will just say one thing, that most of our recommendations, there were 29 of them, and Glenda agreed with all of them. Most of the recommendations have to do with using existing resources that do not require additional resources. The one that does require, that has to do with resources, is the not collecting, waiving the overdue fines. But we found that the cost that's being spent on collecting fines really outweighs the benefits, the revenue of the revenue received, that a portion of the library's clerk time is devoted to collecting overdue fines and reconciling the money. And if this were eliminated, the staff time of the library clerks could be reallocated to the patron services and provide more, provide greater benefit to the patrons who need their services. So we are also recommending that they keep the lost or damaged items. So if somebody, you know, damages or loses something, that they would pay for that. But with the waiving of the overdue fines, we felt that this would eliminate that barrier for those so that they, so everybody could have access to the wonderful materials that our library has. And we also recommend that the library, you know, continue to promote themselves to the community. And in our focus groups, several of the people were unaware of all the wonderful services and programs that they offer. So we want to do a better job at promoting our wonderful libraries and everything that they have to offer to our community. So thank you again for this, for your support on this.
Thank you. Let's go to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Barbara Sosa.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. Can you hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Thank you. I am Barbara Sosa, President of the Friends of the Library. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. The Friends of the Library are definitely in favor of the recommendation asking the city manager's office to pursue additional resources specifically for the library and to implement the audit recommendations. We system has absorbed recommendations.
Barbara Sosa? We'll go to our next speaker and come back to her. Our next speaker is M. Lizette Flores. M. Lizette Flores? Please unmute yourself and begin. Our next speaker is Nicole Ballard.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Ballard, President of the African American Heritage Society of Long Beach. Our organization supports the preservation of the African American resource area at Burnett Library and the special collections within the Long Beach Public Library. I wholeheartedly support this item and thank city council for bringing it forward. The library is needed now more than ever to support Long Beach families affected by the challenges of distance learning and record unemployment. The city auditor's recent report of the library adequately highlights the barriers to accessibility and equity caused by cuts made to the library's budget through the years. Our organization was in fact founded because of budget cuts back in 1997. Our wonderful director, Glenda Williams, the librarian and staff do amazing work with the little resources they are given and need additional support to meet the increasing demand. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, we'll try Barbara Sosa again.
Okay.
Barbara Sosa?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am Barbara Sosa, President of the Friends of the Library. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. The Friends of the Library are definitely in favor of the recommendation asking the city manager's office to pursue additional resources specifically for the library and to implement the audit recommendations. We would be willing to help if we can. We all know the library system has absorbed reductions in its annual budget for more than 12 years, and yet the demands of the residents have only increased, especially from the underserved communities, the Asians, Black and Brown, and seniors. And with the current pandemic crisis, library supporters are afraid it will take a long time to reestablish even the previous service levels for 11 branches and BJK Main to be open to everyone five days a week. I could say more, but I know I'm speaking to the choir. The mayor and city council have always been library supporters. Please pass this recommendation. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. And I just want to add again, want to thank, of course, first and foremost, the auditor and her team. I've always shared with her that the great thing about audits and why we welcome them is because they're focused on improving services and making sure that we are making improvements to departments and that we have a voice and a group of folks that are always looking from a different perspective on how we can do better. And I think that's one of the great things for those of us that appreciate, like, good democracy and good government. Having a full, robust city auditor's office with a strong auditor that is going through and performing these audits is really good government. And I just want to thank Laura, and I've thanked her personally many times on this issue, but to her whole team, they work really hard. And Councilwoman Price, thank you. You've always been a strong supporter of the auditor. And for all, everyone that signed on to this, great item to bring forward, and we look forward to this item as well. And so with that, we do have a, Councilwoman Price, did you have any additional comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, one thing. I would like to make sure that the city manager is really prioritizing what changes we could make with our existing budget now in terms of some of these access issues. And I know I talked with him offline about this, but, you know, it may be that in terms of hours, we need to do some surveying and data collection to figure out, you know, whether evening hours are preferred in one area versus weekend hours in another. Maybe we need to shift some of the resources. And I know he has committed to me personally that they'll look at all of that, but I just wanted to make sure that I publicly stated that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Please cast your votes. We'll call.
District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
District eight?
Aye.
District nine?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. With that, let me go ahead and turn over to the next item. We're going to do item 14.
Communication from Councilwoman Zendehaus, Councilmember Uranga, recommendation to increase appropriations in the city manager department by $1,500 for the 2021 Hope Latina Empowerment Day.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just really wanted to thank staff and my colleagues for their support on this item. The COVID-19 pandemic has forced a lot of events in our city to be canceled and scaled back, which is why I think it's so important that we use the resources we have to support our community organizations as they continue to do the work that, activating our neighborhoods. This is especially true of our Latino and Latina residents, and I'm so proud to partner up with the work that Hope is doing on behalf of our families and our city. I want to say thank you to Hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there's a motion and a second by Councilwoman Zendehaus, second by Councilwoman Uranga. I don't believe there's any public comment. We'll call vote.
District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
District eight?
Aye.
District nine?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item 15?
Communication from Councilman Supernaugh, recommendation to increase appropriations in the city manager department by $500 to provide a donation to Partners of Parks for AOC 7's Quarantine Food Project benefiting fourth district residents.
Councilmember Supernaugh?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the AOC 7 Neighborhood Association for organizing this effort, and this will bring enhanced food security to fourth district residents within their neighborhood associations. So I'd appreciate your support.
Thank you. And can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, just make sure you go into the queue system. Okay, second by Councilwoman Allen. There's a motion and a second. There's no public comment. Members, please go ahead and cast your votes.
District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
District eight?
Aye.
District nine?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item 16, please.
Communication from Councilwoman Price, Councilwoman Mungo, Councilwoman Sorrow, Councilwoman Austin, recommendation to request city attorney to prepare a resolution in support of MWD employees filing harassment complaints.
Thank you. This is, who is the lead author on this? Can you wait a second? Is this Councilwoman Price?
Yes, Councilwoman Price.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to urge my colleagues to support this item. But before I make any of my own comments, I want to see first, is there any public comment on this item?
I believe we have some. Madam Clerk?
Yes, our first speaker is Greg Osti.
First person, the first district is? Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Greg Osti, I'm the President of the Water Management District, local 1902 of Asmi. And I want to express support for this measure. It goes without saying, given the recent event, how difficult the difficulties that public employees face in the areas of sexual harassment and workplace discrimination. And I think it would be an expression of respect both for the employees of the Metropolitan Water District and for your own employees, for you to take a stand against this sort of behavior and to let them know loud and clear that this will not be helped for. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel De La Cruz.
Good evening.
Please begin.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and the City Council. My name is Daniel De La Cruz. I'm a resident of District Four. Formal Asmi Local 3620 President and current Asmi 3634 Member. I'm here because of the situation that an article came out three weeks ago, an investigation by the LA Times, revealed the pattern of rampant sexual harassment, bullying, discrimination, and retaliation at the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. This appalling abuse in the workplace must be thoroughly investigated. While the review initiated by the MWD Board's OP and T Committee is a positive start, MWD workers need a full comprehensive investigation to any and all misconduct taking place at the MWD. Not a process that is limited in scope and may be inadequate. We cannot allow these severe problems to be quickly swept under the rug. Every worker deserves a fair, safe, and equitable workplace. And if incidents of misconduct take place, their stories must be taken seriously. That's why today I'm joining MWD workers in calling for California State Auditor to complete their own audit into the abusive workplace culture at the MWD. Workers need the full comprehensive review into these matters that was promised and is so desperately needed. Abusers and their enablers must be held accountable for their actions. And the MWD must institute structural reforms that increase oversight to ensure reports of misconduct aren't ignored. A state audit is the only way to provide justice for these workers and to ensure these types of abuse never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gina Chavez.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council members. My name is Gina Chavez and I'm a pump plant mechanic at Metropolitan Water District. I'm also the first woman and first Native American Hispanic graduate from the Apprenticeship Mechanical Program. One of two women still working in their field at MWD. And more recently, I'm one of the women who have come forward in the 21221 LA Times article to speak about the corrosive work environment under MWD executive management. I'm speaking to item number 16. And continuing from Ellen Mackey's written comments. MWD cannot continue to waste ratepayers' money on abusive management. For further background, in November 2020, the Women's Caucus, together with three board members, Sylvia Ballen, Charles Trevino, and Adon Ortega, strongly requested an independent outside investigation of a culture of abuse at MWD. Not only the desert, but all the facilities. We specifically stipulated a thorough, full investigation that ranged freely to include every witness and issue raised. Since then, not only were Trevino and Ortega removed, it seems this investigation itself has been compromised through interference from MWD's board chair and MWD's executive management. We are requesting this council send a message to the MWD Board that you, number one, support an independent outside investigation that is uncompromised and without interference; two, to support the request for a state audit which complements the independent investigation; and three, support the SB 331 that nullifies nondisclosure agreements with silences MWD victims. As MWD faces the selection of a new general manager and increased legislative scrutiny due to the workplace abuses, it is critical that Long Beach is informed regarding these issues. Abusers and their enablers must be held accountable for their actions. And MWD must institute structural reform that increases oversight to ensure reports of misconduct are not ignored. A state audit is the only way to provide justice for workers, workers like me, to ensure this type of abuse never happens again. We thank Councilmember Suzy Price and the rest of the Long Beach Council City, or City Council members to move and support Resolution 21-0167. In addition, I invite you to listen to an interview with Claudia Stamper on the KUCI, Ask a Leader, from 2/23/21, and you'll hear more about our experiences firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and go back to the council. I have Councilmember Austin.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, can I say, I wanted to reserve my comments till after public comment. Can I say a few words as a start? Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, Councilwoman Price and we'll go to Councilwoman Austin, for sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So as many, well, most of the council members know now and members of the public who may not know, there have been recent reports, substantiated allegations by female and LGBTQIA+ employees who are working in non-traditional female jobs of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California regarding allegations of workplace harassment and bullying. The incidents have been highlighted in recent LA Times news articles, as well as discussed by Assembly members and state senators in our Capitol. Unfortunately, sexual harassment in the workplace, and especially in the construction and building trade environments, is well-known and often reported reality. There are numerous white papers that have surveyed women in non-traditional roles and the experiences that they have that prohibit them from thriving in those environments. The reason this issue is important to me and why I've brought it forward is because what these women are requesting, and again, several of the allegations have been substantiated. So this isn't, at this point, an issue of he said, she said, but rather substantiated allegations that these employees really want to have a fair process in adjudicating. And that's really what I support. I very much support and ask my council colleagues to support a resolution that offers these workers, as we would want for any workers in any environment that's public-serving, to provide a fair process that's objective and not designed to reach a particular conclusion. I know that the state legislatures who have weighed in on this issue have recommended that the Joint Legislative Audit Committee provide an oversight or a review of this particular issue in order to provide a fair process to the people who have been harassed and bullied and have raised those concerns. Now, I just want to make one thing very clear, and I know those who read the agenda item read this. I don't want to really repeat it to them, but just to be clear, this agenda item does not seek to interfere in any manner with the operations of MWD. It's not the role of the Long Beach City Council to tell another entity or another operation how to run its practices. But, and nor does this resolution seek to prejudge the veracity of the allegations of bullying or sexual harassment or workplace discrimination. It doesn't even serve to render an opinion on whether any wrongdoing occurred. The purpose of the resolution is simply to demonstrate that the Long Beach City Council stands in support of and with the women and LGBTQIA+ employees who worked in these non-traditional roles and served the public through their service, in their desire to receive a fair process and a thorough consideration of their allegations and concerns. We stand in support of their ask and their passion for having a fair process in which to voice their story and be able to have some spotlight on what they experienced and that hope that that objective overview will result in a positive impact for these individuals as well as for the organization. So I ask my colleagues to please support this item.
Thank you, Councilwoman Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Councilmember Price for bringing forward this item and really articulating why it's so important for us to support this. This request, requesting a resolution in support of an independent audit at MWD, I think is merited. I have been very disturbed and concerned by the recent press reports regarding complaints being really not fully investigated, or the feeling that employees that these complaints are not being fully investigated. These are women who work in non-traditional work environments. When you say non-traditional work environments, to understand where the Metropolitan Water District work environments are, the work sites are, they are in some of the most obscure places in, at our state. And that should be taken into consideration, places that are not easily accessible or at all. And this city council has a strong history of supporting workers, women workers, in distress and experiencing abusive work environments. These are very serious allegations facing the Metropolitan Water District that our city should take very seriously as well. And so I'm happy to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, on the queue list, sorry about that. We have Councilwoman Zindehass.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so very grateful to Councilwoman Price for bringing this item today. These reports of harassment will be far from shocking to most, if not all, of the women listening tonight. And it's important that we voice our commitment as a city to changing that. It is my hope, as a unified council and government, city government, that we can demonstrate with our words and our actions that we have an obligation to end harassment against women and the LGBTQ+ community and everyone who has been victim of mistreatment in the workplace. I have forever been a big fan of women in non-traditional roles. And, but these are some of the consequences, unintended consequences that happen in these roles. And that shouldn't be. So I'm very, very proud of Councilwoman Price for bringing this item forward. And I hope that the whole council is able to support this item going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yoranga?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as I'm concerned, harassment at any job for anybody is intolerable and should not be tolerated anywhere. I'm fully supportive of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Price and the co-signers, Austin Mungo and Sorrow, for bringing this forward. You know, items like this are just long overdue. And everyone should have, you know, should be working in a safe working environment. And what this resolution does, it sends a clear message that harassment of any kind is unacceptable and it will be investigated and it will not be tolerated. And I completely support this resolution.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sorrow?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Price for bringing the item forward and having me join her as well as the co-signer. You know, I'm just heartened that even after we've had such strong vocal movement towards, against harassment, that not only females, but also LGBTQIA+ you know, workers face. And I, so I, I'm appreciative that, you know, we are taking a stance. And I hope that all the, my council colleague will, you know, support the item as well, that we continue to take a stance against sexual harassment in all workplaces and all industries, regardless of, you know, where they work. And I also just want to speak that at some point, I hope that these roles within, as we encourage women to work more in these STEM industries, is that they become less of what is described for people as non-traditional roles and that they become traditional. Somebody who went on the STEM pathway, I hope that we make it more inviting and that it make, make it more inclusive for all gender to be able to work in a way where it doesn't distinguish them from what is traditional or not. So I am supportive of this item and thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, we're a large city and the region pays attention to the statements that we make. And, you know, this Water District, it's a large regional water district. And we, again, we're engaged in a number of different regional boards. And I think this makes sense to pass this resolution to state that, you know, this is something that certainly deserves statewide audit. And, you know, if the things accused, the things accused are very serious and we should be on the right side of this and encourage this agency and the state to take appropriate action. So I certainly think this is an appropriate move for us to make, given, you know, our significance in the region. Second largest city in the region. So I think this is important for us to do and I'm happy to support this. Thanks, Councilmember Price, another great item tonight. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, that concludes the council comments. We have done public comment and we will do a roll call vote.
District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
District eight?
Aye.
District nine?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. We're going to quickly do item 20, please, and then we'll go back up to the last two items, item 20.
Report from Parks, Recreation, and Marine, recommendation to adopt resolution to submit a grant application to the California Department of Parks and Recreation for funding under the statewide park development and community revitalization program, Districts one and six.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilwoman Zindehass. Can I get a second, please? Can I get a second, please? Second by Councilwoman Allen. Councilwoman Zindehass, do you have any comments?
Yes, I just want to say how excited I am about this grant application. And I'm unbelievably grateful to our Director Dennis and his team for the work that they have done on behalf of our parks and especially our Drake Chavez Vision Plan here in the 1st District. These are both areas of such high need in our city with so little access to green space. And I know that personally, the Drake Park Vision Plan is something I've been absolutely thrilled about since before I was on council. Seeing this project take its first steps towards, you know, fruition has been wonderful for our Willmore neighborhood and our Parks and Public Works team have done an amazing job with, with the place like the Lower Drake Park connection. We still have a lot of work to do and to address the inequities in our city, especially as it relates to park access. But these visions will more, will, will need a little bit more work, you know, and creating access to high-quality, accessible, and equitable park space in Long Beach is, is something that we're working towards. So I'm really excited about that. Thank you all so much for your hard work on this item. And I'm so incredibly excited for the future of this. So thank you.
Mr. Modica, did you have any, anything you want to present on the staff side on this, or?
That's up to the council. We can do a short presentation by Mr. Brent, or Mr. Dennis, sorry, on this, it's both this and MacArthur Park, and he can talk about both.
Let me go to, let me go to, Councilwoman Sorrow, who has a second. Do you have some comments, Councilwoman?
Oh, no, I was going to ask if we could have staff do a presentation before I make one.
Okay, perfect. Then let's do that. Mr. Modica, let's do a short staff presentation.
All right, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Senator Manager Modica, Honorable Mayor, and members of council. Both of these projects really are tremendous examples where establishing a shared vision by engagement with the community have provided the foundation for the pursuit of significant grant funding. So for the Drake Chavez Vision Plan in particular, should the department be successful in receiving the $8.5 million in grant fund, it would bring some tremendous recreational amenities in terms of the early phases of the overall park's development. And it includes a whole array of things, and especially to be appreciated during this COVID era by the community, where there's a focus on fitness equipment, improved sports courts and athletic fields, landscaping, but also things like community gardens, I think for sustainability purposes, and just the connectivity and giving people in some of the higher-density neighborhoods some open space and some opportunities to really build community in their neighborhood park. MacArthur Park, again, is another great example over in Council District Six of a similar process where developing a shared vision with the community's input is once again providing the foundation for excellent appeal for an additional $8.5 million in grants. In that particular park, there'll be specific renovation of the playground area and expansion of open play for both active as well as passive enjoyment in the park. Perimeter walking trails and multipurpose walkways are proving to be very important for individuals' fitness, and we also look at investing in outdoor fitness equipment and other opportunities for, again, the community to gather, to really become more resilient, getting to know their neighbors. So these are both excellent examples, but we do appreciate council's support for us to pursue these grant funds. That concludes my presentation. Unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Saro.
Yes, Mayor, I was wondering if we have public comment on this item, and then I would like to make my remark that that's okay.
Sure, we do have public comment. So, Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Chan Hobson.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Good evening, Mayor Robert Garcia, City Council members, and City Manager Tom Modica. My name is Chan Hobson. I'm a resident of the City of Long Beach for 40 years. I am the Executive Director of the Parent Association. My office is in the sixth district about a mile away from MacArthur Park. My oldest son grew up with that park. I support item 20 specifically for city staff to find funding for MacArthur Park Vision Plan Implementation Project. MacArthur Park is the park I go, and it badly needs improvement to accommodate the community. The community within a one-mile radius in the area makes up 17% of the Long Beach population, making it one of the most densely populated areas in the city. I was so happy to participate in the visioning process for MacArthur Park because it never had a vision plan. And I am so excited to hear that the staff will be able to find funding to implement the plan. Thank you to the City of Long Beach Parks, Recreation and Marine, and all the partners, AOC Seven, Friends of MacArthur Park, the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust, and City Fabric for the hard work, participation, and commitment to finishing the plan. Thank you to Councilwoman Suli Saro for her support and dedication to ensuring we improve our parks and quality of life for people in the sixth district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Simmons.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Garcia and City Council members. My name is Mary Simmons. I live in the sixth district, and I fully support item 20 specifically for city staff to find funding for the MacArthur Park Vision Implementation Project. MacArthur Park is my park and that I go to, and it needs improvement badly. I actually live across the street from the park. This community, the community within one-mile radius of the area makes up 17% of the Long Beach population, making it one of the most densely populated areas in the city. I was happy to be able to participate in the visioning plan for MacArthur Park because it never ever had a vision plan. I was so excited to hear that the staff will work to find funding for to implement the plan. Thank you to Long Beach's Parks, Recs, Marines, all the partners, AOC Seven, Friends of MacArthur, Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust, City Fabric, and all our local stakeholders for their hard work, participation, and commitment to finishing the plan. Let's continue to bring resources to the park and finish the plan. Two weeks ago, we had an amazing vaccination clinic at MacArthur Park, and I would like to commend Councilwoman Suli Saro, her staff, as well as the entire Health Department for a job well done. We vaccinated 400 residents at MacArthur Park. And thank you, Councilwoman Suli Saro, for your support and dedication to ensuring we improve our parks and quality of life for the people in the sixth district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Williams.
Hi, my name is Melissa Williams, and I live in the sixth district with my husband and my two children, and I wanted to speak in support of the finding funding for the MacArthur Park Vision Plan Implementation Project. As the other commenters have mentioned, this is a very dense part of Long Beach. Many of us live in multifamily homes without a lot of outdoor space for children and families to use. The park is kind of the center of our neighborhood, and it is in dire disrepair. In spite of the condition the park is in, it still continues to host very important cultural and neighborhood events, such as the vaccine clinic that Mary mentioned. I would, I was very excited when I found out that there is a vision plan to improve the park, so I'm really happy that the city council and the city staff seem willing to support those efforts to find funding. And I think that this kind of thing is especially important in the pandemic with the children not in school, to have a place where families can go. I want to thank also the partners, Long Beach Parks and Recreation and Marine, the AOC Seven Neighborhood Association, who do really wonderful work around here, Friends of MacArthur Park, and the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust and City Fabric for all of their support to helping to make our district better, and also Councilwoman Suli Saro for all of the great work that she's done in our area to really improve conditions and equity for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosio Torres.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, City Council members. My name is Rosio Torres. I live in the second district, and MacArthur Park is my childhood park, and it is still my park, believe it or not. Forty-seven years I've been here, and I've never had a visioning plan for my park. So I support item number 20 specifically for city to find funding for MacArthur Park's visioning plan and implementation project. I was glad to be able to participate in the process for MacArthur Park's visioning plan because it had never been done before. Thank you to the City of Long Beach Parks and Recreation and Marine and all the partners that champion for our park, AOC Seven, Friends of MacArthur Park, the LA Neighborhood Land Trust, and City Fabric for their hard work and participation and commitment for finishing the project. Thank you to Councilwoman Suli Saro for continuing to champion for our park. She helped us with the visioning plan and information that we needed, and MacArthur Park is a beautiful park and a beautiful place. Let's continue to reactivate our park. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Let me go back to Councilwoman Saro.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to just thank all of the community members who made their public comment, and I feel that they've said a lot of things that I would have said and that I continue to want to have them lead this process as they did with the visioning with our partners. So I want to thank, again, just reiterate thanking the City of Long Beach staff at Parks, Recs and Marines, and our amazing neighborhood group, AOC Seven, that's just really been, you know, making sure that we address so many of the issues in our parks and our neighborhoods, and the Friends of MacArthur Park, and the LA Neighborhood Land Trust and City Fabric for helping to really just get feedbacks from such a wide variety groups. I saw, you know, many seniors sitting with younger generations and talking about what they really like to see at this park. And, you know, I also want to mention, this is also my neighborhood park. I live in the 90813 area. It's really like within walking distance from me, and I'm just heartened that we continue to have porta potty bathrooms that, you know, has been there for a long time, to variety amenities that I think could be much improved, which is why I really look forward to working with our partners on the ground as well as our city staff to look for funding so that we can make improvements and really improve the quality of life of everyone around the area. So, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Allen. Councilwoman Allen.
Yeah, I didn't have any comments. Sorry about that.
No problem. Let me, I just want to add, great projects, both, obviously. Certainly, the Drake Chavez project has a special place in my heart, having worked on that. In fact, in my predecessor, worked on that project as well, and it's been a long time coming, just building that park kind of piece by piece, and it looks so great now. Love seeing the soccer fields, love seeing the connections. The Willmore neighborhood has done such a great job with the community with that, and folks like Kathleen and Jim and Cheryl and so many others that have played such a vital role in getting that park to where it's at today, and Diane and so many others. So just happy to see this where it's at. And so with that, I'm sorry, actually, Councilwoman Mungo, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask staff where we were on budgeting to replace and repair the bathrooms so that they won't have porta potty bathrooms.
This is Tom. We do have a budgeted project that was added into Measure A, I believe, about a year and a half ago, something like that, and it's in design and it's moving forward.
Wonderful. So I'm just going to speak too, and I know after I made this comment last time, I got a text from Council Vice Mayor Richardson supporting what I'd said, and I think that it's important to say it again, that park bathrooms are part of a critical infrastructure across our city for our families that was prioritized by this council in a previous council action related to Measure A for other Measure A funding that became available. And as I said in the Infrastructure Committee meeting earlier today, when other proposals are brought forward that are in opposition to the original intent of the council, we should also at least be brought the list of things that are not getting funded that would have been funded by the previous council action. Because when you see projects like this one that are just so critical to a community like park bathrooms, I can tell you, today I was at a park and I saw multiple city staff stop on their break because they need to take a bathroom break, and they're an infrastructure across our city, not only for families but for our city workers, and some of them are in such horrible disrepair that we just need to continue to invest in these park bathrooms across our city. They're just too important. And so thank you to the community who took in the visioning process. It will come out to be amazing, but those amazing amenities are only possible when bathrooms function and are kept and maintained in an appropriate manner. So thank you so much to everyone for all the great work, and congratulations to Councilwoman Saro. It'll be a great, great project.
Members, please cast your votes. Roll call.
District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
District eight?
Aye.
District nine?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we are going to item 18, please.
Communication from Councilman Austin, Councilman Supranaw, Councilwoman Mungo, recommendation to request city manager to identify and implement health and safety protocols to allow the mayor and city council to resume in-person council meetings.
Thank you. Councilman Austin.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for indulging me. I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmembers Supranaw and Mungo, for joining me on this item. I think it's been now, been almost a year since we've been meeting via teleconference, and there's certainly good reason for that, as we needed to avoid gatherings as a result of the COVID-19 virus. But many of us, as we have experienced over the year with participating in city council meetings remotely, there are frequent technical barriers to our current setup. We've seen numerous challenges, whether it's dropped internet or phone connections, actually mixing votes, speaking when muted, outside distraction, and of course, the inability for the public to actually see us or for us to see each other as we engage in deliberations on important city matters. As the vaccination process is moving forward, including with most of us on the city council, it is important that we begin having this conversation about how we begin to return to conducting the city's business in person. The goal here is to improve transparency and promote good government while being able to work in a more collegial manner as city council members and elected officials. This recommendation is not meant to put any city employees, any of our legislative staff or staff in that matter, or the public at risk. The council meetings are currently being conducted with a limited number of city staff in the council chambers as is, while also observing safety protocols. And so we're simply asking, I'm simply asking the city manager, these protocols can be implemented in a way that would allow our body, our mayor and council to also be present at one location as we conduct our city business. There are other cities, as well as the state legislature, in Congress, I think that we can look to to provide some models as to how this can take place. And I'm actually pleased to have, see some additional steps being taken over the past few days that would actually help provide additional transparency for our council meetings beyond the current model. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and Tom, for thinking and working to provide video access to the public. I do believe that this will be a step in the right direction, but I also want this item to move forward. As Long Beach and our region continue to move forward with vaccinations and reducing the spread and risk of COVID-19, we should be engaged in discussions as to how we should, and we are engaged in discussions on how we are opening our schools, our workforce, and our economy. And as we're having those discussions, we should also be considering how we can safely begin to reopen and reengage with transparency in our city government. And I believe we need to plan accordingly, and this is more written in a way and requesting the city manager to give us a plan and a course moving forward so we don't, so we have some direction. I look forward to the discussion this evening on the item and request council support.
Is there a second on the motion? Second by Councilwoman Mungo. Councilwoman Mungo.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Austin for bringing this item forward. I know that on some committees, we're able to see each other, but the public can't see us. I think that there's a lot of transparency that comes with the ability to see one another. I was at my field office today in the park, and many residents very far apart popped by and said hello and are feeling very protected by their vaccine. And I know that not all of our city staff have been able to get that vaccine yet. However, I'm sure that the city manager can come up with a way for all of our employees to be safe and for there to be additional transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Yoranga.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. Where are we right now in the tiers? Are we still in the purple or whatever color that is?
Yes, LA County, of which Long Beach is tiered for, you know, for those types of openings, is still in the purple tier.
Okay, is there any expectation? Okay. Is there any expectation that we'll be going into the red tier anytime soon?
Potentially. We've been tracking the trends for the county. And if it continues on the same downward trend, we could reach the seven per 100,000 case limit, you know, in the next probably week or two weeks. And then there's a two-week process to open. So, later in March, potentially, we could be in the red.
Okay. And where are we in regards to scheduling our employees for vaccination?
So, we were able to, early on, identify a number of employees as emergency workers. That was a very difficult exercise. You know, we want to get all of our employees vaccinated. We were hoping to do all 6,000 right up front, but clearly, there was not enough vaccine to do that. We went through a prioritization process and looked at employees that were emergency responders and also ones that were really dedicated to COVID efforts. And we're able to get a number of them done. Over the past, you know, week or two, we were seeing a lot more vaccine coming out. We're also getting the ability now to classify more as emergency workers. And we do believe the state's also going to start expanding some of those, you know, those categories, hopefully in the next week or so, so that we can begin to do some more. So, right now, I would say more than half of our employees do not have access to the vaccine. I'll just give you some examples about probably most of the department directors that attend meetings are not vaccinated. Some are, but a lot are not. And some other support staff are not as well. And so, we still have a ways to go before we can have, you know, all of our staff able to be vaccinated.
Okay. Is there a requirement, since this is a change somewhat in the working environment of our employees, is there a requirement for us to get the union, our unions to change or have a comment on this?
We have to do meet and confer anytime we're changing working conditions. We look at each one individually. Some of the staff who operate, you know, this, you know, the council chambers, you know, have been operating the council chambers, but obviously in a teleconference format and not a full format. So, we do need to talk about any major changes with our unions. HR would make that determination and then sit down and do some meet and confer.
Okay. So, I read you correctly that we have not had that discussion with the unions as well.
We have not done any meet and confer on this, no.
Okay. Well, if we are not fully vaccinated, we have not had a meet and confer with the unions, I can't support the side of right now. And with, if I can, Mayor, I would like to make such a motion to go into video, so if you can, until that time when we can go into full face-to-face meetings.
Okay, I think, just to be clear, so, Councilwoman Yurenga, so, I think you did a second to the motion to just do the video. Is that what you said exactly?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion? Vice Mayor Richardson, that's a second by Vice Mayor Richardson. Vice Mayor Richardson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I think we can, I want to start off just asking staff, just how would you, back to the original motion, because I don't want to dismiss the sentiment here. I think the sentiment here is that you want to get back, we want to get back to in-person meetings because of the value that it brings. And I think the unreadiness that I have is that I think that should be guided by both health and logistical, health guidance and logistical guidance. And so, I want to ask more specifically to city manager, what would be the logistical or health concerns with returning within 30 days to in-person meetings?
So, we've been taking a look at this. There are a number of things we would have to do to be able to resume in-person meetings or do video. It is, it is easier to turn on video using the current WebEx system if we just use the exact same system that we're all using now. We're able to then turn on that video. If we bring back the council in-house, we would need to do a couple of things. We'd have to run a video system of the cameras in the chambers so that everyone can see that. And that takes certain staffing. We would then need to have a call-in line as well for city staff, because we would have to have a number of staff still who aren't vaccinated and are not comfortable coming in, be able to call in, and then have the public line as well to make sure that they have that. So, that does take some technological support. We also want to make sure that all of the council have, you know, for the video option, have the access to a good, strong internet connection and have the tools that you need. Often, it's easier to do video and not, I'm sorry, audio and not just video. And so, that's something we got to work on as well. And then, as raised, we got a note from our unions today that they do want to meet and confer and discuss some of this. So, we would need to do that as well.
Great, thank you. So, I would say, I think the sentiment, the sentiment is right. I think two things would need to happen, though. I would just ask Councilman Yurenga to factor these in. But I think, you know, we're part-time, our staff is full-time, you know, Congress, state legislature, LA City, they're all full-time. The dynamics are completely different. So, to go back to in-person meetings, I think we would need to actually talk with the union. We definitely need to do that. So, I would say, can we include, one, for staff to begin that conversation, because we don't want that to delay the process once we get to the place of reopening. I think, secondly, as it relates to the video, I think that's, again, something we can do now. I think that's what the substitute motion is. I think the video we can do, we can do now. I was ready to do that already. I think we do that now. But the in-person meetings, we need to figure out those logistical issues. And we need to do the meet and confer. So, two things I would ask is meet and confer and then give us a two-front four on what considerations need to be factored in, in order to pull the trigger. So, is it, is it certain tier? Is it vaccination details? Is it, you know, how we're going to handle public comment? All of those things, put in a two-front four so we, so we have a better picture of this. And so, those will be the two additions that I would offer to Councilwoman Yurenga.
Councilwoman Yurenga?
Was that a formal question?
That's a friendly, one, to meet and confer, and two, to do a two-front four on what needs to happen.
Well, I guess I wasn't clear in my line of questioning. It was obviously that. We need, we need our staff to be vaccinated. We need to have a meet and confer with the unions. And we need to work out the logistics of the meetings. And until those are addressed and I feel safe and our staff feels safe, we can go to in-person meetings. But if going to a TFF is essential to clarify this and put it on paper, I certainly support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that's the motion and the second on the floor. Let me move on to the next speaker, Councilwomen Zendaya House.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Like Councilmember Vice Mayor Richardson said, I think that the original motion, you know, I do agree with the sentiment. I think we're all ready and willing and eager to go back to our city chambers and conduct our meetings. I think a year has exhausted all of us. But I think that we need to do that with all the safety measures in place. And right now, I don't think it's safe. I also think it's very important, since our staff would be with us, that they also are vaccinated if we're asking them to come back. So, I am supportive of the sub-motion. I know I've been pushing for video for several months now. And so, I'm glad that we are looking into that right now. I know that also, one of the things that I've been advocating for is easier access to public comments. I know that it's easier for residents who are more tech-savvy to be able to access public comment. But I know that even in my district, even the most tech-savvy residents that I have also have difficulties. So, I look forward to being able to explore that option of being able to have easier access to public safety. And I know that I'm working right now with city clerk to figure out easier ways of being able to bring about easier access to our public comments. Because I, I do think that it's very important that we are on video and that we are seen through video. But I also think it's equally as important that we hear from our constituents and that we give them the opportunity to be able to do a public comment if they so do wish to do so. So, I'm excited that we're moving forward. And hopefully, one day we will soon. And I do see that at the end of the time, end of the tunnel, the light of the end of the tunnel. I do see that light. So, hopefully, we will be in our city chambers soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Allen?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I certainly understand the connectivity and the technical issues that we all experience, especially the public, and that that can be frustrating. And I certainly can't wait for things to get back to normal and get back in the chambers. And being a newly elected councilwoman, I'm just excited to be in front of the community and just to have that face-to-face time with my colleagues. But I just don't believe that the time is right. I think that, you know, we have been offered, council folks have been offered to be vaccinated, but our support team, and I don't believe the city clerk's office has been vaccinated yet either. And I also agree that it's important that we hear from our, from our labor unions and how this could impact their membership. So, I mean, I did receive a letter today from Richard Chavez from AIM. And this is one thing he said in his letter. He said, he said, "We believe that bringing folks back without any science to support the safety of this action is wrong. And we believe that an item like this requires a robust conversation. We cannot and will not allow our members' lives to be gambled with." And I certainly, and I know, I can't imagine anyone wants to gamble with any of anyone's lives. And we definitely want to, to see, you know, the staff vaccinated before we open up the chambers to the public. So, I can totally support the substitute motion. And I look forward to getting on video.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I too also support the substitute motion because I think that first and foremost, the safety of all staff, especially members of, you know, of our union as well, are taken into consideration when not only the council member asks, but there's so much more that takes to run a council meeting that we have to consider. And that I believe it's important, I want to uplift what councilmembers Zendaya said about making sure we continue to put public commenting process that's accessible and is easy and not just technology-wise, but language-wise as well, in the forefront of everything we continue to do, whether it is the teleconference to the video and hopefully in, you know, the future, in person. So, I, again, just believe that it continues. I support the video and that we need to make sure we have extensive conversation about, about it before we go in person. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Austin.
Thank you. We haven't heard from the public comment yet, but I do want to just say that I do appreciate the sentimental considerations from most of my colleagues who we've heard speak already. I think there's been some misunderstanding in terms of intent. I wanted to say that I knew that agendizing this item would create an uncomfortable kind of conversation. But, you know, we all ran for office. And anytime we're before the public, even on the council dais, it's not a comfortable situation. And so, the intent behind city council meetings are not supposed to be comfortable. But we should be safe. That is something that I think we all agree on. I will claim some success on this item since we are moving toward being more transparent, more accountable. That means video access to our meetings. That is a, I'm thrilled with the direction that we're moving in. And I think I mentioned that. And so, the substitute motion, I will support, but I would have supported that as a friendly, had I been given the opportunity to do that. And pointing, I want to point to the, to the, as Ms. Allen called it, the AIM union. The meet and confer process is directed oftentimes by policy directed by council and direction by the city council. And so, should we move forward, whatever we're moving forward, that process is going to be what it is anyway. And so, I think, you know, we do a pretty good job of engaging with our city representative employees, unions. We should continue to do that, moving forward with this process anyway. And so, I'm going to support the substitute on the floor. I mean, I do not need to, there's no reason for me to die on the sword over having in-person city council meetings. But I do think we should be thinking about this. We should be planning for that. And we should be transparent with the public in terms of giving an expectation on what that looks like. We are moving forward. We are, we are lauding our vaccine rollout. Many city employees already are vaccinated. And I don't, you know, everyone has HIPAA privacy. And so, no one knows exactly who has been vaccinated. But I do expect over the next few weeks, three to four weeks, with the vaccine that we know we are, we're supposed to be getting, we should be in a very good shape within the next 30 to 45 days. And so, hopefully, we can revisit this conversation very soon.
Thank you. We have one member of the public for public comment.
Yes, Michelle Baker?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Baker, and I'm a resident of District Two and a business owner in District Three. I agree with Councilmember Austin's comments to have a plan to return to in-person meetings. Most council members have been vaccinated, and there's only three meetings per month. Although the public can't attend in person, these meetings should be video livestreamed, and public still should be able to provide comments. Even if you don't approve this item, it is imperative that city council video streams their meetings. Most other government entities have WebEx, Zoom, video meetings, including LA City Council and the Coastal Commission. Even the DNC held their convention on Zoom. I have reached out to the city clerk several times inquiring about video stream meetings. It was told in July, yes, it's up to the mayor to decide. And it's ultimately the decision that council as a whole to hold the WebEx video meeting. I don't understand why there is reluctance to hold video meetings when most other government entities have been doing them for months. Transparency is crucial in an open society. And people need to know that their council members and mayor are listening to them. Video streaming ensures that the Long Beach community can see their representatives in action and see what's going on in the city. Thank you so much, and hope to see you live soon.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Price?
Mr. Mayor, so, I agree that we should proceed with the video access if we can. But I'm not clear, because there was a lot of dialogue, how long that will take for our city team to be able to make that technology work for all of us and for the public.
Yeah. And let me, let me, that's a good question, actually, for the clerk. Councilwoman Price, if you don't mind, we can ask the clerk, I was going to ask the same thing. Madam Clerk, Delagarza, if you're, if you're available. I know that, I know you've been working on this video kind of transition for a few weeks. And I know Mr. Modick had mentioned to me a couple of weeks that there were, there were some, some TI issues that you guys were trying to figure out with software. Can you maybe update the council on kind of where that's at? Because I know that your team's been working on that.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council. We have been working on this for a few weeks. And we were able to meet last week with Tech and Innovation on Friday and determine that there is a way to move forward using WebEx and showing the video. So, we're fairly confident if we do some testing with the council and make sure that the internet speed and the equipment is adequate, that we'll be able to do that going forward. And again, it's just a matter of when we can work with the council offices and determine if the equipment is sufficient and get this going. So, we feel, we feel really good that we can make this happen pretty quickly.
And Madam Clerk, just to clarify also, Councilwoman Price's question, I think what you had mentioned to me is that you think in the next, like, you know, meeting or two, that you'll have everything kind of tested. And then, whatever software that I think you guys were looking at buying, or you guys were looking at some kind of tech of tech back, uh, back of the house piece that you needed to add is, would be in place. Is that correct?
So there is a piece of equipment or, or some software that we're looking at for translation services. That won't be ready, uh, within the next couple of weeks. However, that will not prevent us from moving forward with showing WebEx video on screen. Um, we, we feel fairly confident in the next week or two, if we can get the equipment distributed to the council members and get it tested and verify that everybody's connection is sufficient, we should be able to do that absolutely. Um, the soonest would be next week, but it might be the week after if we can't, uh, reach out to all the council members and get that situated.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Back to you, sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, um, Mr. Mayor, you, you had my question answered, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. There's a motion and a second. Uh, members, please go ahead and cast your votes. It's a substitute motion.
District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four?
Aye.
District Five? District Six?
Aye.
District Seven?
Aye.
District Eight?
Aye.
District Nine?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-one, please.
Report from Parks, Recreation and Marine. Recommendation to receive or report and confirm the proposed Long Beach Animal Care Services Strategic Plan, citywide.
Thank you. And we're going to go ahead and turn this over to staff. We know that there's a full presentation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, yes, we do have a, a fairly in-depth presentation to go over, uh, our strategic plan for animal care services. Uh, this has been the culmination of several years of work, uh, with our community members, with our department. Uh, it started with an audit, uh, from the, uh, city auditor to really encourage us to do a strategic plan. So I want to really walk you through, uh, what those recommendations are. Uh, this was in front of the council back, uh, in December and, uh, council asked us to spend a little bit more time going out to the community. Uh, we did that in February and we had some more community meetings back now, uh, to present it. So I will turn it over to Brent Dennis, uh, and his team to, uh, present their strategic plan for your consideration.
Thank you, City Manager Modica. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm joined this evening by Stacy Danes, our Director of Long Beach Animal Care Services, which provides outstanding, uh, services not just to the residents of Long Beach, but also to several surrounding communities. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Stacy for a presentation this evening.
Uh, thank you, Brent. And, um, what an interesting time we live in right now. Um, I really want to just thank you, uh, our honorable mayor and our council for your continued service and leadership to our community, especially in these uncertain and trying times. Uh, I'm here this evening to share with you the current draft of the LBAX strategic plan as it was developed in cooperation with the Mayor's Animal Care Visioning Task Force. Um, so this evening's report, uh, will include an update on recent operational changes and impacts, um, as well as an historical perspective on the shelter. In addition, I'll share with you the development of the strategic plan, including a brief overview of that plan and what are some of our next steps. And then I'll be happy to take questions, Brent and I, after the, um, at the end of the presentation. So I do definitely want to acknowledge the efforts of our mayor, Robert Garcia, in his establishment of the Mayor's Animal Care Visioning Task Force and certainly each of you council members for your support of Long Beach Animal Care Services. You know, without your support, this plan, um, and that task force would not have been possible. So I, you should know that each task force member really deserves a great deal of time spent recognizing their efforts in our community in addition to their work on the task force. This task force worked hard for two years and struggled personally and professionally with the questions posed to them by the community and one another. They remained engaged in agonizing conversations about what kind of shelter their community deserves and they faced harsh criticism on all sides and persevered to help bring this plan to life. And I know this council understands the journey of the task force because you faced and been engaged in much of the same. And your work too has been critical to reuniting and creating thousands of happy beginnings for pets and their families. Uh, in just the last two years alone, you've continued to support animals in the shelter and our community by approving the addition of a full-time registered veterinary technician, a full-time veterinarian, a full-time volunteer coordinator, a full-time adoption clerk, a full-time marketing staff. And in May, our city council adopted the Compassion Saves Operational Model that calls the shelter and the community to save all healthy and treatable animals. And now this year, you've provided additional skilled veterinary resources that will allow us to continue to provide lifesaving outcomes for animals. So, um, I want to share with you admissions to LBAX and our admissions have followed national trends of reductions year after year. Uh, spay neuter laws, breeding laws, licensing laws, and a lot of hard work from the animal advocacy community and rescue groups, as well as generous support from shelter donors have contributed to the reduction of animal intake at the shelter from over ten thousand dogs and cats in two thousand and ten to a little less than four thousand in two thousand and twenty. Now, a lot of that has to do with managed intake and COVID, uh, but we think that that uh, could be sustainable. Uh, and with those reductions in shelter admissions, shelter deaths have also fallen exponentially by comparison. LBAX more aggressively pursues live outcomes for animals than any time in its history and animals that were killed without outreach to the community are now stabilized, they're treated and they're made well. And when this is not practical to do in the shelter, rescue groups are engaged for their assistance in securing positive outcomes for the most medically and behaviorally challenging animals in our community. And our rescue partners should be absolutely recognized and honored for their very significant contribution to unprecedented save rates of Long Beach Animal Care Services. By rescuing these animals, they are forever changing the fabric of what compassion means for our community. Today, Compassion Saves Operational Model is working. No longer are people only looking for the most perfect of pets and shelters in rescue. People actively want to help those animals that are less fortunate and who may need lifelong management. This work would not be possible without LBAX's willingness to first save these animals and without our rescue group's abilities to support their loving homes. And working together, we have been able to save ninety-eight percent of the animals in our care. Uh, historically, for decades, the Long Beach, uh, the city of Long Beach has provided animal control services to the community. Um, our original shelter was located on Willow Avenue and it housed the city's stray and abandoned animals. They were cared for, for up to seventy-two hours and if they weren't taken by their owners in that time period, they were killed in accordance with and by direction of California state law. But you know, this was true for ninety percent of all animals out entering animal control shelters in California prior to two thousand. Communities, uh, were also demanding that animals be saved and not killed and destroyed as many laws dictated. The outdated laws were being rewritten, new laws were being created to protect animals and these laws would replace the edict of killing and destroying unwanted animals with the call to adopt all healthy animals and treatable animals if they could be mild healthy. At this time, the Society of Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, Los Angeles, expressed to the city their serious interest in establishing a presence in Long Beach. And in nineteen ninety-eight, agreements, uh, were signed and a partnership or, um, a joint venture was sort of created. Um, these agreements emerged before a tumultuous backdrop of the animal welfare movement. Animal control was moving to animal care and shelters were rejecting the catch-and-kill model of the past. And this movement became known as the No Kill Movement. The PD Pitchford Companion Animal Village and an education center, also known as the Village, opened its doors. Uh, then in two thousand and nine, this council enacted major improvements in Long Beach's municipal code and those changes have had dramatic and lasting impacts on shelter operations and the lives of animals in our community. Long Beach Animal Control officially became Long Beach Animal Care Services. In two thousand and ten, Long Beach Animal Care Services implemented an adoption program and that continues to grow from a hundred and fifty the first year to now, we are adopting over a thousand animals a year. In two thousand and thirteen, we implemented a volunteer program to enhance the care of animals in the shelter to include enrichment and socialization above and beyond the cleaning and feeding provided by staff. And now today, nearly three hundred volunteers contribute nearly thirteen thousand hours of love and life annually to the care and keeping up the animals in our shelter. In two thousand and fourteen, we began to create partnerships with other animal welfare and rescue organizations who would assist with the medical and behavioral rehabilitation of animals to place thousands more. And then in two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty, the city really ramped up its efforts to enact true shelter reform. In two thousand and seventeen, in response to the community's growing concern that despite its best efforts, LBAX continued to fall far behind the policy set by the state of California that no healthy or no treatable animal should be killed in the shelter. The city auditor retained the services of JVR Shelter Strategies to bring the operation of LBAX, uh, to review the operation of LBAX and to determine what efforts might be enhanced to bring about better outcomes for shelter animals. And that review, uh, was conducted in two phases. The first phase focused really on shelter operations while the second phase focused on staffing and resources that were already in place, as well as what resources might be needed to provide an acceptable standard of care for animals. You know, over two hundred recommendations were made in over fourteen areas of operation. So it was quite, um, extensive and a bit overwhelming. Um, those recommendations were broken into immediate, short-term and long-term priorities and the most urgent and necessary recommendation in the first phase was really an identity for the shelter, which included developing a mission and a vision and a strategic plan. While the second phase really focused strongly on underscoring the need for increased and more developed staffing, regardless of what direction Long Beach Animal Care Services decided to go in. And then in two thousand and eighteen, in response to this, uh, Mayor Robert Garcia convened the Mayor's Animal Care Visioning Task Force. And this was represented by twenty, uh, members of various stakeholders, including reputable and local animal rescue welfare organizations, shelter volunteers, animal advocates. Uh, and this group met in a public forum each month to find a path forward for LBAX. And some key areas the task force focused on were the recommendations, of course, made in the audit, uh, growing and expanding the Long Beach Volunteer and Adoption Program. Uh, what was the relationship and agreements between the S P C L A and what was the viability of No Kill in Long Beach? And it was clear that the top priority that could address all of the others was that the task force was to develop a mission and vision for LBAX and a strategic plan would be necessary. The department hired JVR to lead this, uh, strategic planning efforts because of their previous experience, uh, knowing about LBAX's operation, uh, in partnership with the Adisa Group, um, who also provided consultants that are well-respected animal welfare professionals with proven track records of success in bringing about systemic change in shelters to improve and save lives. Uh, the development of that strategic plan included a review of the audit conducted by the city auditor. Uh, there was also a public meeting held on March third that invited the community, uh, March third, two thousand and nineteen, that invited the community to give feedback on the kind of shelter they would like to become. Uh, feedback was welcomed for weeks to follow in preparation for, um, two strategic planning workshops that were held separately in May, two thousand and nineteen. One day-long workshop was held with the task force and a two-day-long workshop was held with Long Beach staff, um, animal care services staff. And then in two thousand and nineteen, Long Beach's city council adopted the operational model as a framework, um, for the strategic plan called Compassion Saves. And it strives to expand what can be done to not just stop the killing of animals in the shelter, but really to imbue our community with compassion and, uh, for people and animals. Compassion drives the work that is necessary to save lives, including foster care, adoption of pets, volunteerism, donor funding and a lot more. And it is compassion upon which the success of the plan rests. Um, the working, uh, the working group, uh, met weekly and reported regularly to the task force. The task force meetings were really focused primarily on the progress being made and developing the strategic plan to ensure the, our plan remained relevant and on track for final approval, as well as to give the community an opportunity to provide timely feedback during the development process. The final rough draft of the plan was reviewed by the task force in a public meeting on July sixth, two thousand and twenty, and was approved by the task force in another public meeting on September eleventh, two thousand and twenty. This draft plan was then provided to certain stakeholders in October and those stakeholders included Long Beach staff, our volunteers, um, rescue and transfer partners, um, certainly anybody who requested it. And then other engagement opportunities were made possible through two public meetings held in February. Um, this plan is publicly available on Long Beach Animal Care Services website for anyone's review. Individuals can complete a survey that captures specific ideas and thoughts about the plan. In addition, um, an email is also provided, uh, on our website to allow for sort of a free form of gathering feedback, uh, about the plan. These mechanisms will be made available for the life of the plan so that questions or concerns or ideas can be captured in a timely fashion. This data may also be used to help further develop the current plan, um, or hit, or really to help shape the next one. Um, so our vision is simple and clear and that is that Long Beach is a responsible, compassionate and informed community working together for the health and welfare of its animals. This vision can be realized when we accomplish the mission of Compassion Saves, which is that we ensure that Compassion Saves by supporting the people and animals of our community through outreach, education, guidance and support services. We protect shelter animals by creating an environment of care through enrichment and innovative programs. And that's really what this plan is all about. It's all of the things that we need to do to accomplish that mission. Um, there are five strategic goal areas. The first one is that the shelter is an animal welfare-centered operation. Next is outreach and engagement, um, also financial sustainability, lifesaving and staff development. The first strategic goal is that LBAX's operation is healthy for animals. And this means that animals receive the care necessary for their age, their health and behavior status according to national guidelines and best practices and that we're not just sort of making things up as we go, but it's evidence-based. And that they experience the shortest shelter stay necessary. Uh, this is accomplished through several strategies and the first is ensuring all programs in operation have data analytics that measure our success and program effectiveness. Pathway planning, housing plans and communication strategies will also ensure a healthy and short shelter stay. Our second strategic goal is that LBAX supports and engages the community and this is a very robust portion of our plan. In order to support and engage the community, LBAX must provide contemporary animal care services. These services are comprehensive adoption and volunteer programs, pet surrender intervention, connection to resources for low-cost medical and spay neuter services, pet-friendly housing, behavior and training help. Um, these are all important aspects of providing contemporary animal services over abandonment and relinquishment of pets. LBAX also needs to increase accessibility to, awareness of and compliance with LBAX services and city ordinances. This can be accomplished through effective marketing and communication strategies. And finally, humane education, another strategic objective, has long been a foundation for helping a community develop a humane ethic, not only toward animals, but towards each other. Making human, uh, humane education available through LBAX will fill a much-needed gap in our community. These are real equity issues for our city too. The same individuals that struggle with education, housing, healthcare and employment are the same individuals that struggle with providing necessary and mandated care for their pets. The third strategic goal is that LBAX's operation is sustainable. Uh, we've been working to establish effective ways to manage our current agreements with S P C L A to maintain the integrity of our operation and to ensure that the Compassion Saves Model of operation is able to be fully realized. In addition, LBAX is conducting a budget gap analysis to determine what opportunities exist to reposition staffing to provide services for the community in line with Compassion Saves. And there are several key positions or responsibilities necessary to fully implement Compassion Saves, especially in the areas of foster care, behavior and enrichment. Um, fundraising goals and strategies are also needed to help provide sustainability in LBAX Compassion Saves Model. We have already begun work with the Bureau of Park Planning and Partnership to identify this for, uh, LBAX. Uh, the fourth strategic goal is that programs improve and save lives. LBAX has provided lifesaving programs out of necessity and response to need and these programs need structure and more communication between the shelter and those that use them. These programs- These programs need to enter their next stage of development, and this includes adoption and rescue and transfers, our volunteer program, as well as a comprehensive foster care program. They need guidelines, process, and resources to help animals who are saved by them, but also to provide clarity and ease of use for those that are using the programs. This effort will be enormously important in ensuring our community and stakeholders can have confidence in our programming. And then the fifth and final strategic goal is that Elbaks' operation is healthy for people. Providing our staff and volunteers with updated and clear policies and procedures, relevant job descriptions, solid professional development and training programs, and wellness programs that help them build resiliency in and deepen their engagement with their work is fundamental to the success of any plan for Long Beach Animal Care Services. Our next steps include continuing to provide platforms for our community to engage with us. We are in the process of reviewing feedback that we receive, and we look forward to your continued support as we finalize and implement this important plan. An important part of any strategic plan is really keeping it alive and accountable in front of the community, so they can participate in progress and celebrate the plan. So I thank you for hearing this report and on the hard work and dedication of the Mayor's Animal Care Visioning Task Force and shelter staff. We are open for your questions.
Well, why don't we go to public comment? There's a, we have a good list of public comments. Let's go through all those.
Our first speaker is Carol Peterson.
Like I commented at the public forum held on February 13th and 17th, I have a concern with the very beginning of the strategic plan, the mission statement. It says that the shelter will ensure Compassion Saves by supporting the people and animals of the community through outreach, education, guidance, and support services. It goes on to say that we protect shelter animals by creating an environment of care through enrichment and innovative programs. That's kind of a red flag for me. The last time I heard innovative in relation to the shelter was that SPCA LA entered into a partnership with ACS, promising to deliver innovative and revolutionary care. We all know how that turned out, an audit resulting in 186 recommendations to improve. I know Long Beach didn't want to commit to no-kill. There weren't even any no-kill advocates on the task force. And what concerns me about the mission statement is that nowhere does it say we will save lives. Instead, it links Compassion Saves with outreach, education, guidance, and support services. This just doesn't seem specific enough with respect to animals' lives. And to say that the shelter will protect and care for the animals is necessary, as stated in the audit, but again, it's not the same as saving lives. Language is important, and it needs to be specific in writing. Take Best Friends, for instance. Their mission statement says they want to end the killing in America shelters. That seems to be pretty clear about saving lives. I would have liked to see specific language in our mission statement, that above all else, right up front, lets the community know that Elbaks is about saving lives. And to do that, a comprehensive adoption program is vital. It needs to be a direct function of shelter policies. Instead, goal number four in this strategic plan, titled Life Saving, is all about transferring, fostering, and volunteering. Again, nothing about adoption. In fact, I only saw the word adoption mentioned a few times in the entire plan. Yet a comprehensive adoption program independent of SPCA LA is what many people have advocated for years. It would seem, then, throughout this process, that engaging the public for feedback about the development, organization, and fulfillment of the strategic plan was all for show. Because I read the original draft and subsequent drafts of the strategic plan, not much changed. This seems troublesome to me, especially for the animals, but also for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanne Wast.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Council, for your time this evening. I'm very concerned with Agenda Item 21, which seems to have suddenly changed to receive and confirm. It would be helpful to understand what that exactly means. Thus, I'm asking that we make, submit a motion to change it to receive and file, which is what we had been told for since back in December, that this was just a draft plan, and it was only to be received and filed for intent of disbanding the task force. So there's confusion, significant confusion on what the agenda item is to occur tonight. And there, on R21, it mentions that the plan is to be moved forward, that the, they're looking for city council to move forward with the plan, and I, that again, is vague, and I'm not sure what that means, to move forward. There, the public only had an opportunity for the very first time. I know there's been mention of other meetings, but that is not the case. I want to go on record to make that very clear. February 13th and 17th was the very first time that the community was allowed to give input, and that was only last week. So we were told that the plan was draft, and there would be further revision, because the plan is not ready to be, I may think, but received at this time. So the question is, is ethical, is one of the core values listed in this plan? Yet if there were suddenly changing the motion to approve and make this a final strategic plan, that's very concerning. The plan misses the mark, beginning with this nebulous, confusing, and meaningless mission and vision statement. There's no goal for spay-neuter, which is the biggest gap in our city. Adoption is hardly mentioned, which is again, very troublesome. The metrics and deadlines have been removed. The community has been waiting over a decade for a meaningful strategic plan. The audit from 2017 pointed to significant issues, yet we do not see a spreadsheet of any sort where it lists the audit items and a checklist confirming they have been addressed in this plan. There's no SWOT analysis that I can see in every strategic plan processing would have a SWOT analysis. I don't see any industry trends that were collected. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. There's many shelters out there already doing, have robust adoption programs, and also missing is that any strategic plan has goals and objectives, and then you would see strategy and action steps and deadlines. There's no strategy action. Again, I said the metrics are missing. So this plan is just extremely nebulous. Goals that should be included are maximizing adoptions and our homing. That's not mentioned. We could go on and on, but you know, the public is the main major stakeholder here, and only having an opportunity last week.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Mammeli.
I'm a Third District resident the last 67 years, and I'm concerned about the Elbaks' plan to enter into any operating agreement with SPCA LA. More than a year ago in January 2020, there was an extensive discussion at city council about allegations of bad behavior by SPCA LA. That was preceded, that was preceded by several other meetings in 2018 and 19 about problems with SPCA LA. As a result of those meetings and through those meetings, the public was informed that SPCA LA was unilaterally deciding policy at our shelter, had been operating its businesses without business licenses, was creating a hostile work environment at Elbaks, and had multiple other violations of the lease between the city and Elbaks, including not allowing Elbaks to use common areas that it had a right to use under the lease, and not providing keys to common areas as required by the lease. It was also taking the adoption fees generated from Elbaks' animals, which should have been put into an account to funding for spay-neuter at Elbaks. Councilmember Susie Price, at the January 21st, 2020 council meeting, expressed serious reservations about entering into any further agreements with a partner, SPCA LA, that was violating terms of their original agreement. Is that still a concern? Councilmember Al Austin specifically asked for an audit of SPCA LA's operations and finances. Has that occurred? The public has heard nothing but these requests, oh, excuse me, about these requests. No audit has been done on SPCA LA that the public has been informed of. A number of council members at the January 2020 meeting noted that SPCA LA has not been a good partner to Elbaks. We need three things here in Long Beach. Number one, we need Elbaks to be completely independent of SPCA LA. Number two, we need the city to enforce the terms of the lease. And number three, we need the city to require SPCA LA to provide reports on all of its intakes and outcomes, including adoption, euthanases, transfers, et cetera, to the city. That is the only way that we know that our shelter animals are receiving the proper care and treatment that they deserve and that the taxpayers want. This just makes no sense, this plan. Another issue with the item is the enormous emphasis on licensing in this plan. On Plan Page 7, it says the city wants to increase license sales by 50%.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Baker.
I want to thank the mayor and city council for taking animal care so seriously. You have made so many positive changes and really listened to constituents. However, tonight, I'm asking that you don't confirm the Elbaks' strategic vision until changes are made to the plan. I participated in the meeting two weeks ago with other residents. We had many questions that were not addressed or included in this plan. The plan is ambiguous without any specific metrics. I'm also very concerned about recent animal policies that Ms. Gaines has implemented in the last year, especially in regards to stray cats. The shelter is not being transparent with intake and release numbers. Public records are taking weeks to get a response, and there is confusion on who's managing the shelter and the volunteer program. Ms. Gaines confirmed to me an email today that she implemented managed intake and said that California does not mandate that shelters have to take in stray cats unless they are injured. What does that mean? That goes against Hayden's Law and other California welfare laws. Currently, the shelter has around 12 cats, which is low because intake is low. Elbaks is requiring people to make appointments to turn in strays, including filling out paperwork before an appointment will be issued. They're even making it more difficult to turn in to a stray cat, encouraging people to leave the cat where they found it. This is a best-run policy, and it is used to make release numbers look better, less intake, and better outcomes. What is happening is we have more cats roaming in the neighborhood and searching for food and being vulnerable to coyotes. Look at next door and see the daily concerns about stray cats in different neighborhoods. Managed intake and dubious RTF programs are what Orange County Shelter did a couple years ago until they were sued. San Diego Humane Society was served this week for similar policies. I'm asking for clarification on Elbaks' current policies and also an update on SPCA LA and Elbaks' contracts, which city council asked for an update almost a year ago. Please do not confirm this plan until we have some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Turner.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Patricia Turner. I'm the Director of No Kill Long Beach. Our organization has been advocating for a no-kill shelter since 2012. I'd like to address the strategic plan's take on adoptions. In a town hall meeting back in 2014, Mayor Garcia promised over 200 animal advocates that he would put in place a robust adoption program. A well-articulated, fully-developed adoption program is one of the key programs that every animal shelter should have, and that adoption program is noticeably missing from this plan. In fact, adoptions are only briefly mentioned, and the few action steps listed with regard to adoptions do not directly increase adoptions. Among the action steps mentioned are customer satisfaction surveys, communications volunteers, and a shelter beautification plan. Those are good plans, but the most important ones that directly increase adoptions are missing. Shelters need to have weekly off-site adoptions in order to place animals into good homes. They also need to have mobile adoptions that take animals to neighborhoods around Long Beach, making it easier for people to adopt. Elbaks received a mobile adoption ban as a donation a few years ago. That mobile adoption ban, which was valued at $100,000, is not mentioned in the plan. In addition, a robust adoption plan has daily or weekly goals for adopting out animals. These are also not articulated in the plan, nor are plans for low-cost adoptions or frequent ongoing adoption promotions and events. With all due respect, it is not possible to adopt animals out by indirect means, such as giving surveys and improving the look of the shelter, both of which are prioritized in the plan. Mayor Garcia, you made a promise to the people of Long Beach to have a strong adoption program. However, what we are seeing here is essentially the same plan Long Beach has always had, to act as animal control and allow SPCA LA to do the adoption with no transparency from that agency. Folks in Long Beach have been asking for a no-kill shelter with a strong adoption program for 12 years now. The city organized a public feedback meeting in March of 2019 that was overwhelmingly dominated by people who wanted a no-kill shelter that is separate from SPCA LA, and their requests have seemingly fallen on deaf ears. It's time for Long Beach to do the right thing and stop seeing Elbaks as animal control and a cash cow with all of the licensing, you know, that they're asking Elbaks to do, which all goes straight to the general fund, which many people don't really even realize it does not go to the shelter, and make Elbaks into the proactive, animal-friendly, life-saving, and transparent no-kill shelter that people and taxpayers in Long Beach want. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Aragon.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Wendy Aragon, President of Pet Assistance Foundation and a Long Beach resident of the Third District. We recognize the great amount of work and time involved in developing the strategic plan. We applaud the plan for its recommendations in, excuse me, improving adoptions, fostering, and shelter care practices. However, we do see some major problems in two fundamental areas, the proposed managed or limited admission and the community cat rescue, release program. Managed admission is not, managed or limited admission is not open admission. We know COVID understandably had an impact on how admission is handled, but we have been told the practice will likely continue indefinitely because, quote, "it seems to work well for the shelter," end of quote. Limited admission greatly inconveniences residents, turning in owned animals and strays, especially those good Samaritans who go out of their way to rescue an animal from a dangerous situation. Many people don't have the capacity to keep strays or the time to show up for appointments and fill out extensive paperwork. We have knowledge of cases where people have waited four to five days to relinquish a stray. Second concern is the community cat program, where friendly-to-feral cats and kittens over 12 weeks of age are being released into areas that come, they come from, without caretakers to provide food, shelter, in a safe area with neighborhood approval. We are very aware of the suffering endured by these cats in areas where the community cat programs abound, such as Orange and Riverside Counties. Tragically, these community cat programs present an un exemplary modeling for the public to think it's okay to abandon their cats. The proponents of this program, in conjunction with big humane organizations, argue forcibly about the success of these release programs, supposedly grounded in best practices and research, while negating the profound humane issues involved. We want to see our shelter address the root cause of overcrowded shelters, pet overpopulation. It is through education, enforcement of our very progressive laws, and convenient low-cost spay-neuter services that will ultimately prevail in modeling a meaningful live release rate that reflects humane reforms in addressing pet overpopulation. At this point in the discussion, we recommend that the strategic plan be put on receive and file.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Richardson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My comments are short. We've seen a lot of this presentation last, last time.
We've seen a lot of this presentation last, last time this came around. I want to thank Stacy. You obviously demonstrated your passion here. I thank you for acknowledging that this is a living document. There's clearly more work to do. I think, you know, the community wants to see a more rigorous effort around adoptions, and that's going to have to be demonstrated. So we look forward to regular updates on how we can do that. I'm also interested, you know, and we've talked about this in the past, you know, there's stray animals in 90805, it's still, still a problem. I know that we've been knocked off course in many ways on a lot of our priorities with COVID-19, so the more that we can talk about how that's impacted our ability to respond and how we can get back on, you know, get back on track for the future, I think is good. Regular communication with the council on how we're doing would be good. Also want to see how we can continue to invest in mobile, mobile adoptions and things like that. So I want to see, you know, a lens of this on budget discussions and, and all of those things. But I think this plan, the city council should adopt this plan, and we can always add or make adjustments to this plan, but this is, this is a strategy. That's what this is. Any given Tuesday you can make adjustments to this plan. And so I think we need to make, move forward and adopt this tonight. So that said, I move staff recommendation. Thanks.
Okay. I have a second, or Councilwoman Mungo, second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I tried to move the item, but that's fine.
Did you have any comments, Councilwoman?
I do.
Good. Councilwoman Mungo?
Thank you. First, I want to recognize the task force, the volunteers, and the rescue groups. This has been a huge, a huge lift for the community, and I'm really proud of the work that's been done. I do appreciate a lot of community comment today, and I know that there are a lot of things that continue to change, and I don't know that the community or even the council have heard back on a lot of the things that have made progress over the last several months. The real dialogue has been around COVID and vaccinations and the sick humans, and so the, the animal progress has maybe not been front and center, and so we can do a better job at that. I think that that kind of ties into providing the communication toolkit to the Parks and Rec team to ensure that they are able to provide that kind of, use the, utilize the toolkit to share that information across the community. I know that community meetings have been held, and I appreciate that. I would like to differentiate something. So in my full-time job, we've been going through strategic planning, and I think that something that I didn't hear in the plan today, which would really fulfill the needs of the community, is a 100-year purpose. Now, I get a mission, and I get strategies and goals, and I know that in my discussions with Mr. Dennis, that is coming next. But first, before you even get to the mission, you really need to talk about 100-year purpose. And a lot of what I'm hearing from the community are things that aren't potentially executable in the next five years under certain restraints and commitments that previous councils had made, but I will offer the following. I listened to the community, and I had not written down 100-year purpose or anything related to it before the community comment started, but I really tried to pull some pieces from the things that you each said. And I think what you're looking for is that you're, you were hoping that the mission would be more of this kind of 100-year purpose. LBAX becomes, or is at that time, you'd say the 100-year purpose, is the premier proactive, independent, humane rehomer of lost or abandoned animals, and the educator and supporter of responsible animal caretakers in Long Beach. That kind of says a lot of things, right? We heard a lot about being proactive. We heard about our independence from SPCA LA. We talked about the humane components of our education program, both in the community and the way we treat animals in our shelter, including veterinary care. We talk about how we take care of lost or abandoned animals and how we support animals that are already in homes in the community. I can't tell you how often I hear about irresponsible pet ownership, and really that us helping an animal find a home is not the end of our relationship with that, that pet caretaker. And so I think that that's just a baseline, and maybe the animal task force could add to it, or the LBAX staff could contribute, but I think that the community really wants to hear that there is a long-term vision, as was articulated by the council at previous meetings, of a proactive, independent, humane organization. And I know we're growing into that, and I want to appreciate Stacy for her work. This has gone through many iterations. It has been a really, really great process, a lot of community input. And all of that, while she was working on that, many of you know she has many agenda items that are due back to the council any day now, including the revision to the commitment to adopt policy, the changes that have happened already with our relationship with SPCA LA. I know a lot of you are asking for an audit or those kinds of things, but independent organizations don't have to provide those to us, and they're not required by the contract. And for that, you should be angry at councils of the past that allowed that to happen. And many of those people still live in our city, and we have to take heed from the lessons of the past in every decision that we make at the council so that we don't set up future councils for situations such as this. And I know that there are many controversial issues before this council on a daily basis and relationships with major entities on other assets in our city. And we look to this relationship with animal control. We look to our relationship with the Queen Mary. We look to our relationships across the city that we're in in hopes of drawing both reflection and strength moving forward. So for that, I want to say that please don't despair that there is still progress moving forward. I am in contact with animal care regularly. We were just over at the shelter, I don't remember how many days ago, and my husband was there with an animal that needed help and support, and I get to see the volunteers that are there on a daily basis. They're working with the animals, they're running the dogs, and when they get a big dog or an animal that, perhaps the volunteers that are there aren't able to handle her...
Your five minutes are up.
Thank you. They call in additional volunteers who may have kind of been out of the loop during COVID, so I appreciate that. Thank you for all the progress you've made, and as you can tell, I'm a big supporter of this item, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Price?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do have a couple of questions based on the community comments. The first question I have is, what is the status with the SPCA LA issues that we talked about at our last meeting? Not our last meeting, but the last meeting where we discussed this and some of the potential issues with the contractual relationship.
Yeah. Councilwoman Price, thank you so much for asking your question. This is Stacy. We have been meeting regularly with the SPCA LA to sort of go over the agreements and attempt to really get on the same page and determine what is needed in order to do that. So I am happy that our last meeting was very productive, and we were able to identify what we think is, you know, really sort of holding us back. And I think this council, as well as, you know, me and SPCA LA have all recognized that this agreement, as, as it was drawn, is probably not the agreement we would draw today, but it's the one we have. And so it's really about making it work and making it be relevant and finding out how, how that is or is not the case. And that's been very, very challenging. So we do have some forward movement. We will be working together with the SPCA LA to ensure that all the parts of the agreements are actually there. I don't know if you know, but some agree, or some exhibits are not, we don't have them, so we're in the process of really working on those things. So I'm encouraged by our last meeting, and I guess that's, that's what I have to say about that. Do you have any?
No, no. I think, I think, I think forward movement is good, and I think that's what we were all hoping for, understanding that there were a lot of concerns, both from the operations side in the city, but also from some community concerns. So I'm happy to hear that there's some forward movement, and I'm, I'm okay with that as long as, you know, you're letting us know that it continues to be forward movement.
I would also, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Price, I also want to let you know that I've been working closely with the director Brent Dennis, and he's been working closely with the city manager, and both have been very supportive and very, very much concerned about making sure that this is right and it's going in the right way. So there isn't a sense that anything is being put off or there's a back burner, you know, other than what typically is happening with COVID. So I just want our council to know that, that this is first and foremost, in turn, as far as animal services is concerned, and our director is very much aware of that and supporting our efforts.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think I'm probably going to run out of time in just a minute here, but there was some community concern regarding whether this is a receive-and-file item. It's my understanding that it is a receive-and-file item, that this is the plan, the plan can be modified, it can be tweaked, it can, it can contain additional inputs in the future. Is my understanding correct?
Councilmember, this is City Attorney Parkin. The, the item this evening is a report to confirm the proposed Long Beach Animal Care Services strategic plan. So you're basically adopting it this evening, but as you also said, and I think the maker of the motion mentioned also, that it can be amended and modified at any Tuesday meeting at the direction of the council.
Okay. So this, this document that we would be confirming, it's, this is the strategy and the vision that at this moment we want to move forward with, but this strategy can be modified based on community inputs, based on the director's observations, the director's operational recommendations, things of that nature. I just, I want to make sure that it's not set in stone, that it is something that it's, it's, it's a, it's a plan, but it's not that such a plan that it can't be modified.
That, that's correct. However, it couldn't be modified by the public or by the director. It would have to come back to the council, and five votes could modify it.
Okay.
Councilmember, this is Tom Modica. I think that's absolutely right. The strategic plan would be the plan until you modify it. There's still going to be lots of different things that we work on through animal care services. So this isn't an operational plan where it's down to every single task that is done. That is really at the responsibility of Stacy and her group and Brent, but there's going to be lots of things that will continue to be worked on, all of our adoption programs and all of the things the council has talked about, about, you know, getting an operational agreement at SPCA LA, those are all going to continue.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And I know, Ms. Daines, you talked about the community outreach process. Many of the residents who called in tonight for public comment are Third District residents. I think they identified themselves as such, and they meet me regularly. They're very active in this conversation, and I want to make sure that they're heard and they continue to be heard. So in terms of moving forward, to the extent that they feel more input from them would, would make this plan better, or, or enough input wasn't...
Your five minutes are up.
Okay. Let me just finish this question. What other opportunities are there for, for potential modifications if parts of the plan need to be tweaked or, or that's brought to your attention?
So I think those modifications would be based on, you know, data collection and, you know, how programs are effective or not effective. So it's really going to happen as the plan is unfolding and as we are actually engaging with our community, because it's not something that animal services does in a proactive way. We're very reactive. So I think it's important that there's an update provided on a quarterly basis about where we're at with the plan, and that we're sharing all of that with our community and engaging with them and hearing, you know, what's happening, and not just a handful of folks, but people who are really the ones who need the services that we are providing or not providing.
Okay. So my time is up, but I'm going to queue up again because I do have a follow-up on that.
Councilwoman, why don't you go ahead? If it's just, if it's one question, go ahead and just do the follow-up on, on that question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So is it possible, since we're going to be having quarterly updates, is it possible, can this council request a community meeting prior to the next quarterly meeting, or quarterly update, to, to get input from what's going right, what's not going right, so that that can be included in the quarterly report?
This is Tom. Can I suggest that the first one be maybe more like six months or so? If we did a meeting for a quarterly report, we'd be setting, you know, there's not going to be a whole lot to report back in about two and a half months or three months.
You're right. I agree.
I have that report right now.
I, I agree with that. I agree. I just want to make sure, and I agree, six months would be ideal, but could we, could we commit to a community meeting to really get feedback? Because there are a lot of people who don't feel like they were heard, and I just want to make sure they have an opportunity to be heard before the quarterly update or the six-month update.
This is Stacy. I, you know, I, I'm very open to that in terms of engaging our community with animal services, and so I think that that is something that we can do as a department more frequently than it necessarily needs to go to council for, you know, review, as Mr. Modica was suggesting. So I think absolutely right. That's a wonderful thing to do, especially in the beginning phases of this plan as we're rolling out and progressing.
Okay. So, so then we can, we don't, that doesn't, that, that community feedback doesn't have to be at the council level. In fact, I'd prefer it not be, because there are going to be details and things that, that you and your team are going to understand and be able to have meaningful conversations with the community on that council may not necessarily have the expertise on. So could you just host those, just before you report back to the council?
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then Councilwoman Allen.
Yeah. Thank you, Brent and Stacy and everyone from the animal care and our parks team for this report. I do also agree that I think it's important that we keep our community engaged. I do have a really quick question. One of my residents raised this question about turning in stray animals. So can you clarify whether residents need appointments to turn in stray animals? Some residents are concerned that requiring appointments and, and paperwork for stray animals will result in less animals being cared for. So can you address that question, please?
Sure. So anyone can certainly bring a stray animal to the shelter or turn in a stray animal. We've always required paperwork. People do have to show us their government-issued photo ID, and we have a process that we go through when we're interviewing them to determine what's going on with an animal so that we can, you know, accurately look for its owner or place that animal. If an animal is sick or injured, those animals can come right in. If somebody is not able to take care of an animal for a few days to see if they can locate the owner, which is a far more effective way to reunite an animal with its owner, is that it stays where it was found for two to three days before it comes to the shelter. Neighbor-owner-returner, owner-return rates are four to five times higher than at a shelter. They're significantly reduced when an animal is removed from its community and placed into a shelter, and the chances of reunification go from about 80% in the neighborhood to about 20% in the shelter. So it's being done because it's best for the animal. However, if someone doesn't feel safe, or they're not able to adequately care for an animal, or they just simply don't want to, they absolutely can bring an animal to the shelter. We are going to ask them if they can make an appointment with us, but if they absolutely refuse and they say no, then we will help them.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will, we have a motion in a second, so please go ahead and cast your votes. Roll call.
District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
District eight?
Aye.
District nine?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you very much. We are moving on to new business, starting off with Councilwoman Allen.
Yes. I just wanted to, real quickly, I just wanted to close in honor of Nicole Wilkie, and I would like to close the meeting in her honor. She's been a longtime pillar of the retro row community. She was an activist for human and animal rights. She was a talented musician who often unlend a hand in support of others. If you are so moved and there is a GoFundMe in her name to support the love of her life, Billy Burks, during this time, our community will miss her, and our love and support goes out... our community will miss her, and our love and support goes out to her family.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Yurango?
I have, I have two closing remarks, but I would like to defer to Ms., to Councilwoman Siro for Tom. And then I would like to add to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Yurango. I'd like to adjourn in memory of His Excellency Tom Polk. After a life dedicated to serving his community, he has left his family, community, and a lasting legacy. In 1973, His Excellency Polk, along with three of the others, top educational faculties, were sent by the Cambodia Ministry of Education to obtain a higher education at the University of Southern California to support the development of Cambodia's education system, which was an opportunity that proved to save his life when the Pol Pot regime took control of Cambodia in 1975. So in 1973, he began his legacy in the U.S. by getting his Masters of Science in Education at USC in 1975, and then a Masters of Social Welfare from UCLA in 1980. And, you know, education has always been his, you know, a principle as he worked towards providing educational opportunities to refugees from war-torn countries and immigrants seeking hope and education in pursuit of the American dream. And in 1984, was a founding board member of UCC or the United Cambodian Community. His Excellency Polk led the creation of the largest NGO to serve the immigrant population as well as the Cambodian refugees resettling in Long Beach and was the ED until his return to Cambodia in 1993 to help rebuild the country. And I just wanted to share that the Cambodian Traditional 100 Days will be the official memorial for him. Councilmember Yurango?
Thank you, Councilmember Siro. And I just want to add that Mr. Polk was a trailblazer over here in Long Beach in the Cambodian community. He did, was the first executive director of the UCC. And I had the honor of being asked by him to participate in the groundbreaking ceremony for the UCC building that was erected back in 1987 or '06, around there. I also had the honor of, my wife had the honor of having hired his son, Gravith Polk, known as Ray, who served as the first Cambodian Chief of Staff on the 14th floor of our old city hall while she was a council member and served there for eight years. And he also served as my Chief of Staff for six months during my first term on the city council. So the Polk family is very important to me and to, to my wife. And we give our deepest condolences to, to the Polk family and thank Tom Polk for his wonderful and glorious service to the city of Long Beach and to, and to Cambodia. I would also like to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of one of Long Beach's very old strawberry farmers, Roberto Ramirez. My sincere condolences go out to the Ramirez family as he lost his battle to COVID-19 and currently has another member of his family hospitalized due to COVID-19. Roberto Ramirez has owned the Strawberry Ranch in West Long Beach on Santa Fe Avenue and Arlington Street for the past 53 years. He was born in a small ranch an hour away from La Habana Jalisco. And his story is similar to many immigrants that came here to work as the Bracero, under the Bracero program. His hard work paid off, and after working full-time with Japanese strawberry farmer in North Long Beach, he's had other great opportunities to share his niche. Many members of the Long Beach community and beyond have purchased the fruit of his neighbor's strawberries and described him as a connector in our community. Tonight, I would like to pay tribute to Roberto Ramirez and extend my deepest sympathy to him, to his family and friends. And please, wear a mask, practice social distancing, and please get vaccinated when you are able. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes new business. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn the council meeting and thank everybody for joining us tonight. Meeting adjourned.